And Councilmember Brandau.
Here.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Here.
Councilmember Olivier. Councilmember Quintero.
Here.
And Councilmember Jean.
All right, we are going to begin this morning with the invocation from Pastor Kevin Smith from the Art Christian Fellowship, if you'd all stand, and then when Pastor's done, we're going to salute the flag.
Gracious God, as we gather this morning, we have to confess that we often use opportunities to criticize rather than to bless our public servants. So we ask your blessing on these public servants this morning as they make wise decisions for our city. Bless our Chief of Police. Bless our Sheriff. Bless this council as they sit and as they listen. Give them ears to hear and hearts to understand. We thank you and we praise you that you are a mighty God who loves all of your children. Amen.
All right, we have what looks to be a great ceremonial presentation this morning, a proclamation of Blackbeard's Family Entertainment Center Day. And Councilman Capriolio, that's in District Four, and so why don't you lead us?
Well, good morning, everyone. Good to see you all here. This is going to be, I think, the best presentation of the year. Don and Greg, would you come up here, please? Well, what can I say about this group? Everyone's been to Blackbeard's. They've created great family memories for all of us in Fresno and outlying areas. It's a destination location, so. For my family, we've been going there. My son's nineteen, so probably fifteen years. And we've enjoyed the arcade. In fact, I think you were one of the first to have Dance Evolution. And both my son and daughter enjoyed that. And it was fun to watch them. I'm glad someone can dance in our family. Anyway, today, we're going to celebrate your thirtieth year in operation. You're an important part of the Fresno community and our economy. We thank you for providing all that entertainment and great times for the citizens of Fresno. So with that, we look forward to another thirty years of Blackbeard's in Fresno with the funded entertainment center that you continue to provide. So thank you all so much. So we have a proclamation, and it basically indicates and says, whereas Blackbeard's Family Entertainment Center is celebrating its thirtieth year of providing a fun and entertaining business atmosphere for our Central Valley. Blackbeard's has been creating happy memories for generations for the Valley children and families. They've continuously operated a business to the very highest standards of excellence. Blackbeard's remains environmentally conscious by having the largest solar array of any amusement park in Central California on their sixteen-acre location. I could go on, there's so much here. They have the, they maintain their, quote, "swashbuckling spirit of pirate fun." I think we might get some, a little bit of that coming up here, won't we? And now, therefore, be it resolved that we, Mary Ashley Swerengen and the Fresno City Council members, do hereby proclaim that July, June 26th, June 26th, to be Blackbeard's Family Entertainment Center Day in the city of Fresno. Can we have a round of applause, please? I think you have something to put this in, don't you, or some sort of a?
Do?
Oh, look, oh my gosh. We have pirates.
Means a lot to us. Thank you.
And thank you again, and you guys look great. So I don't know if there's anything else that's going to come about in the next few seconds.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. What? Oh my God, security. I'll be like Clint. And thank you, hey.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Good job.
Got a winner. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Hey, Cap. Cap, remind them that's not how council operates up here, okay?
We may need you later today.
Some of us were bummed they missed you, Cap. All right. That's great. Oh, wow. So now we are on to the approval of council minutes from previous meetings held on June the fifth, the ninth, the tenth, and the sixteenth of this year. Madam Clerk, have there been any changes to the minutes of those meetings?
There have been no changes, but we're also going to include June 11th. And June 19th will come back at our next meeting for approval.
So we'll clear those ones up next time, but for these, we're good to vote then?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Do I have a second? All right, all in favor? Motion passes seven-zero. Now we are on to council member reports and comments. Any council members have anything? Councilman Jean.
I know there's a lot of important things going on, but as you know, we're sending out our best wishes to Team USA. They'll be playing Germany soon to get to the knockout stages. They're in a little flood right now, so hopefully our meeting will go as quickly as we can and we can hear our support them to go. And Mexico's already through, if anybody else is concerned.
Councilman Jean, that game starts at nine?
I heard that it got a little bit delayed because of the rain, so they're trying to get more people in and give it a chance. Not that I'm paying attention to what's going on.
You're not, you're not going to go missing about that time then, huh?
You know, I feel a little bit, it's a little bit stuffy in here. My glands are a little bit swollen. I might have to go get checked up from the doctor real quick.
Yeah, at the sports bar. Councilman Baines.
Well, Councilmember Jean stole some thunder. I was also going to wish Team USA support, so go Team USA. But also, I wanted to welcome an intern into my office, to the council Xavier Richards. He actually is a PG&E intern. Our office has participated for the last several years in the PG&E intern, summer intern program, and this is now our third or fourth intern. And we want, I just wanted you all to see Xavier. You guys are going to see him going up and down the hallways. Don't give him a hard time. There's no hazing in council. So welcome Xavier to Fresno City Council.
Right on, Xavier. All right, screen is clear. And Bruce just left the room, and I was going to ask him a question. All right, let's see, Renee? I'm just going to ask a question, get it, kind of get it on the record, but I'm not sure if you've got the right, if you've got a response for it, but that's fine, too. About, probably three months ago, I asked for the water management team that we have hired to take a look at any other options for putting together the municipal water, you know, project that we're beginning. And has there been any movement on that at all, or any updates from that?
Yeah, actually, your question's very timely because we have, we have had several meetings, and the consultants will be getting back to us next week on a timeline that then we can bring to council and to discuss the capital plan going forward, as well as the rates.
Okay, and has there been any form of a comparative study done on different methods to deliver that project? Has there been a comparative study in looking at whatever type of cost-saving options we could?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And, and of course, with any kind of major capital project, where you, where you start and where you end are two different things. So as, as the department has gone along, they have found significant cost savings in some projects that we will be able to discuss. But as well as there have been other, other costs and parts of the project that, you know, where we originally thought we were going to go down one direction, we'll have to go down another. And all of that is being analyzed and addressed, as well as other funding opportunities, rather than just issuing bonds. We are also looking at, you know, low or no interest loans from the state that we may be able to take advantage of.
And so when do you think you might be able to update council on that a little bit more detailed?
I'm thinking in, when we come back after the recess in July, probably the second meeting.
Okay, all right, cool, thank you. Councilman Quintero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to congratulate everybody, all the students graduating from their respective schools, and in particular, I wanted to congratulate a group of seniors that the school is located in Councilmember Baines's district. And I'm sure he's very aware of it. It's the Youth Build Charter School, and it's run by the Economic Opportunities Commission. What makes this group special is that they, they serve the entire city of Fresno, and it's part of the local Conservation Corps program. When you see young people working on median islands, cleaning up parks, or, or just doing general cleanup throughout the city, that's your local Conservation Corps doing that. And like I said, they benefit the entire city. And there's, there's, there's a school that they have to attend. They have to keep their grades up in order to be part of this program. It's a great program, and it's really benefited the city over the years. And I know it's, it's a school that Councilmember Baines is proud of. It's in his district. I've visited and encourage folks to see it. But I just wanted to acknowledge that the group of students that are graduating this year, they, they've worked hard. They've got, got to be there, I think, at seven in the morning, or, and they have to keep their attendance up. It's very important. So it's a good group of children, so I just wanted to congratulate them. Thank you.
Councilman Quintero, we'd have difficulty starting this meeting at seven. Well, we have difficulty starting at eight-thirty, but that's a good point. All right, then, we are on to the approval of today's agenda. Madam Clerk, have there been any changes to today's agenda?
Yes, there's several changes. We're working with an amended agenda. So the General Administration 2F has been moved to 10:00 AM 2A, and that is after the 10:00 AM item. So we'll hear that then, 2F. And you guys should have a copy of the changes on your, on your desk, yeah? So you can follow along. Let's see, also, the invocation, we were missing that information, was Kevin Smith of the Art Christian Fellowship. Item 1E, staff needs to read a statement into the record. The proclamation for terraces at San Joaquin was removed from the agenda by staff. And the last change is item 2A, staff is to read information into the record when that item comes up.
Okay, thank you. All right, then, do I have a motion to approve today's agenda with those changes? Do I have a second? All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes six-zero. Now we are on to the adoption of today's consent calendar, and we're going to welcome the public to come up and address any item on today's consent calendar, and just step up to the microphone, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning, council. My name is Stephen Song with the Public Works Department. I need to read into the record a correction to item 1E. In the body of the language, the correction need to be, we are awarding the contract to Lee Wilson Electric Company of Oro Grande in the amount of $315,407.25. There was a mistype in the staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any members of the public like to address any item on our consent calendar? All right, up here at council, Councilman Olivier.
Yes, Council President, if I could register a no vote on items I and O, please?
Okay. Councilman Brand.
I'd like to pull items E and F.
E and F, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, then. Any other council members? All right, we're gonna, do I have a motion to vote on today's consent calendar? All right, and do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes six-zero. Now we're on to contested consent. These are the items that Councilman Brand just pulled from the consent calendar. So Councilman Brand, you'd pulled items E and F. You'd like to start us off.
And really, Scott, I just want to, this is, E is putting a traffic signal at Shepherd and Chestnut. Can I do these one at a time or two at a time, City Attorney? No, I'll do it one at a time. And item F is a signal at Perrin in Somerville, and like so many other intersections in the city of Fresno that are high on the warrant list, that need, have safety issues. I want to thank you and the city for finally getting these things online. I've had numerous email complaints about the safety of Chestnut and Shepherd, and this is a huge step in the right direction. So I'll make a motion that we approve item E.
Thank you for your support. Pull on that separately?
Yeah.
Now.
To approve.
Councilman Brand's made a motion to approve item E on the consent calendar, and I have a second. All in favor? Aye. Do I go back out to the public on that one? City Attorney?
It's not required, but we normally do.
Okay. No, we already voted. We've got.
Okay.
Six, six to zero.
Also, I'd like to make a motion to approve item F.
Okay. Any members of the public like to comment on item F? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six-zero. All right, then. Now we are on to the general admin portion of our calendar, of our agenda. So we are on admin item 2A. Actions pertaining to the installation of a water main in Willow Avenue between Teague and Jurgen Avenues, and in Shepherd Avenue between Winery and Willow Avenues. For Public Works Department.
Good morning, council. Laun Gunevina, Design Services Manager, Public Works Department, Capital Management Section. Before I presented this item, I'd like to read into the record a change in local preference, under subtitle, "Local Preference." City Attorney's Office wanted to replace the text, current text with, it should read, "Local Preference Was Not Implemented Because the Lowest Bid Was a Local Business."
All right, thank you. Any members of the public would like to address item 2A? All right, council members? This is in Councilman Brand's district. What's that? Yeah. Lee, this is in your district, District Six, if you want to.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve and a second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes six-zero. General Admin, item 2B. Actions pertaining to the Fresno Clovis Regional Wastewater Reclamation Tertiary Treatment and Disinfection Facility.
Good morning, council. Steve Hogg, Department of Public Utilities, here this morning, asking to adopt a number of items associated with the Fresno Clovis Regional Reclamation Facility Tertiary Treatment and Disinfection Facility. Those items include, adopt the findings of mitigated negative declaration, award a construction contract in the amount of $28,674,500 to WM Lyles Construction of Fresno, award a professional services contract to Corolla Engineers in the amount of $1,417,588 to provide construction management services for that project, and award a professional services contract to Moore Twining Associates in the amount of $116,029 for material testing and special inspection for that project as well. As I think all the council members recognize, the importance of ensuring that we have a very diversified and secure water portfolio to provide water supply for Fresno. One of those items, we believe, is important, is the use of recycled water. So back in, it was April of 2013, we brought forward to you the Recycle Water Master Plan for adoption. That plan included the construction of advanced treatment facilities and distribution system to make use of at least 25,000 acre feet of recycled water in the community to help offset our other high-quality water supplies and use for nonpotable uses. So this project is the first phase of implementing that master plan, and we're pretty excited about it. It's going to provide the first five million gallons a day of the advanced treatment we need for the recycled water. It's also looking to replace some old and outdated facilities at the regional facility. And it will also provide additional disposal capacity we need for, to add additional capacity for wastewater treatment for additional development as we move forward, relieving the pond, the pond system out there. So with that, if you've got any questions, I'll be ready to, free to answer those.
Thanks, Steve. We're going to go out to the public really quick, and then we'll come up, and that's Councilman Baines's district. We'll start with him. Any members of the public like to comment on this item, 2B? All right, then. Councilman Baines, that's located in District Three, so. Councilman Baines has made a motion to approve. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven-zero. Our next item, General Admin, item 2C. Actions pertaining to the award of a construction contract for the emergency generator upgrade at Fresno City Hall. That is also with our Public Works Department.
Good morning, Council President and Councilmembers. I'm Debbie Bernard with the Department of Public Works. On May 15th, staff requested that council award a construction contract for the emergency generator upgrade at Fresno City Hall. At that time, council requested that the item be shelved for thirty days while the local preference ordinance was reconsidered. Earlier this morning, within the consent calendar, council approved bill number B-26, modifying section 4-108 of the Fresno Municipal Code relating to the application of local preference for a public work of improvement. Therefore, due to a change in city policy, staff is recommending rejection of all bids for the emergency generator upgrade at Fresno City Hall. Staff will be here for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. Are there any members of the public that'd like to address this item? All right, then, we're going to come up to council. This is also located in District Three. Councilman Baines? So move. And Councilman Quintero, you had punched in just a second. All right, perfect. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven-zero. Madam Clerk, we can't, we can't go to any of the timed items right now. I think we should consider going into closed session and coming back, so.
Council President, you still have, I believe, and I apologize if you've already covered this, but do we still have items E and F?
Say, say that, oh. All right. So you'd like to, like me to skip over D at this time and move to E and F? All right. That makes a good use of time right there. We're going to move to General Admin, item 2E. Approve a 1.3 million home investment partnership program with the Caesar Chavez Foundation for the construction of King's Canyon Place. And that is from?
I need to recuse myself in this item. Councilmember Quintero reminded me, we have a property across the street, so I believe that should be sufficient for a conflict, so I'll come back when it's over.
Thank you, Councilman Brand. So that is from our Development and Resource Management Department.
Yes, hi, Karina Nunez, Housing Division. I have a short presentation. I'd just like to tell you briefly about the application process. On March 10th, the Housing Division released a notice of funding availability for $1.3 million in home funds. We received seven applications and one cho to application. The initial review was completed in April. The underwriting was completed in May. The project was presented to HCDC yesterday, June 25th, and the project will be included in the annual action plan presented to council in July. A summary of the applications include one cho to application, six general applications, which include four private developers, one nonprofit, one housing authority, and not-profit partnership. The geographic breakdown of the applications received are as follows. Zero in District One, zero in District Two, three in District Three, zero in District Four, three in District Five, zero in District Six, and zero in District Seven. The initial threshold review includes, is it in a target area? Are there leveraging of funds? Is it infill development, near transit? Does the project create jobs and training? Is the project close proximity to amenities and cost per square foot and other underwriting criteria? All of the projects received were, underwriting was received for all of the projects received, and determining factors include need for funds, ability to cover debt, leveraging of other resources, cost competitiveness, ability to serve housing element requirements, which includes new construction of units, and ability to repay home funds. So the project selected was King's Canyon Place, eighty-nine units of affordable housing. The loan would be 1.3 million in home funds. The total project is approximately 19.3 million. The developer still needs to acquire the parcel from the city. The project will be high-quality design, near transit, and there will be a leverage of one to fourteen, leveraging of home funds to private funds. The project also meets several home program priorities adopted by council on December 16th, 2010, in that it leverages home funds, is expected to create, generate additional revitalization in the area, is an infill development, is located on a high-capacity transit corridor, will create approximately thirty construction and trade-related jobs, is in close proximity to amenities, and the developer has experience to deliver the project on time and within budget. And lastly, approval of the home agreement will be contingent upon a NEPA assessment, authorization to use grant funds, acquisition of the property, and a final home agreement. That concludes my comments, and Jacqueline Rodarte, Tina Aguilar, and Mei Chun from the Caesar Chavez Foundation is here to answer any project specific questions.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to address this item? All right. Oh, we do. Yes, please come forward.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. My name is Jacqueline Rodarte with the Caesar Chavez Foundation. I'm a senior project manager there. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for this opportunity, and I'll be available to answer any questions you may have. The Caesar Chavez Foundation has over forty years' experience in affordable housing and development of new projects, as well as rehabilitation, and we're very committed to all of our projects, particularly, we've just completed the rehabilitation of a project in District Number Three, Plaza Mendoza, and so we look forward to another opportunity in your area. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline. All right, any other members of the public like to address this item? Councilman Quintero, I think?
Thank you, Mr. President. As was stated earlier, this project is in District Five, and I wanted to thank Karina for all your hard work on this and getting this together, really appreciate it. Also, wanted to thank the city manager and assistant city manager. As, as you know, the background of the property, the, the initial development group that we were working with was a total nightmare, and it just seemed like it was a, between day and night on, on working with those projects. And I know you weren't involved in the first one, so neither was Bruce, so I just want to thank you for, for your hard work and really making it come together. And also, council, the Caesar Chavez Foundation has how many projects in Fresno currently? And also, council, the Cesar Chavez Foundation has how many projects in Fresno currently? Six, was it?
We have five projects.
Five. This will be their sixth one, so, and they're throughout the city of Fresno. They're not just in, in, in District 5. This, in fact, I think this is the first one in District 5, but they're, they're good quality projects, they've owned them for years, they don't, they don't develop and sell, they, they keep what they, their properties and, and take very good care of them. So we're just really happy that you're coming into District 5 and looking forward to working with you. The corridor on Ventura Kings Canyon is picking up with, last year, we had six new businesses that opened up on that corridor, and four of them were national corporations, so it's really going to enhance the, the area as well as this project. So thank you very much. With that, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you. You mentioned there are five other projects. Do you know what districts those are in, or?
Of the Cesar Chavez Foundation?
Correct. The, the foundation. More specifically, anything in District 4?
In fact, I believe there is one in District 4, and the remaining are, would be in District 3.
3 and 4?
Yes, and this would be in District 5.
Thank you. And then, I see some boards there. Did someone want to make a presentation, or?
Actually, I believe, well, we brought these boards, they're attached to your package, but in the event that you wanted something enlarged, we brought them, and the event that you'd like to see that, and I could make them available.
Okay. Just want to make sure you had an opportunity to put everything out for us to consider, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and the screen is clear. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Now we are on to General Admin, item 2F, approve assignment of a home program agreement.
Council President?
Yes.
That item has been moved to after the 10 o'clock item.
Oh, that's right.
On the changes to the agenda.
I wasn't following my own notes. All right, on item 2F, we're going to tackle that after we hear the 10 PM, or the 10 AM presentation. Can we do, city clerk, can we do the next item? The RDA?
I believe it's timed as well for 9:45. Oh, yeah, 10.
Probably all.
Okay. Then I think what we're going to do is move towards, move towards our closed session? And city attorney, if you would mention the things in closed session?
Yes, in closed session, we have conference with labor negotiator concerning all of the listed bargaining units, and there's an opportunity for public comment before we go into closed session.
All right, then. Nope. Yeah. No, we can't do that until after 10, after the 10 o'clock presentation. Nope. Councilman Shong, we're going to have a little. All right, then, we're going to go into closed session, and it's my understanding we've been passed a letter from Mr. Pete Flores, and Pete, if you would, we're going to give you a chance to make comment before we go into public session, closed session, excuse me. So if you'd like to come forward and tell us a little bit about this letter, it'd probably be something of, he's not here? Oh, I thought he was here. All right, then, we're going to go into closed session, then. We'll be back as soon as that is over with, and our city attorney will make a report at that point. The adoption of the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget, and so, yes, Jeff.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. Jeff Cardell, Director of Personnel Services for the city. As you know, every year, the, the city, I'm sorry, apologize for that. As you know, every year, the city adopts a salary resolution, and the purpose of the salary resolution is to establish rules for the city employee compensation and related requirements. This year's salary resolution has a number of changes which I'd like to highlight. In particular, in Exhibit 3, the classes of commercial building inspector and senior commercial building inspector have been added. Also, in addition to Exhibit 3, we've added the title of crime scene invest, crime scene technician, 1, 2, and 3. In Exhibit 13-1, we've added the classifications of supervising commercial building inspector and supervising crime scene technician. And then the salary ranges in Exhibits 2 and 14, with the designated salary range numbers have been modified on those particular exhibits. And the primary reason for the changes in, in the salary ranges in Exhibit 2 has to do with compaction with bargaining units. And these changes provide for degrees of separation with the bargaining unit classifications. In addition, it provides for degrees of separation within the chain of command within Unit 2. There are a number of other minor modifications in terms of language. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Jeff. I'm going to go out to the public now and see, and matter of fact, I know that there are members of the public that'd like to comment. I've got a group of cards, and then after I've gone through these cards, anybody else can comment as well. And so the first one up is Steven Soar, I think. I'm not sure that's your last name, Steven, but you're up first.
Oh.
Our Steve. Hey, Steve, what's your last name?
Son.
Oh, S-O-N, that's an N, all right. I got it from here on out.
Sloppy handwriting?
Yep. No, my bad.
All right. Good morning, council. My name is Steven Son. I reside in 2216 North Carson Court in Visalia. I'm here on behalf of the CFMEA regarding this matter. We ask, urge you to say no. If not, ask for a delay and make modification to this salary resolution. For the last five years, staff has been told by Bruce and the mayor to go back, to give back to this great city because we're always in the precipice of bankruptcy, or for that matter, we just couldn't afford anything. Within the last five years, we have seen our staff reduce from 4,300 down to about 3,300. Basically, the ratio is, our, our employees to residents has been, been basically increased from, we're serving 116 residents for one staff member to 151 resident per staff. We have given up our benefits. When that wasn't enough, we, we all chipped in, granted that the negotiation was very heated, we still gave, we also took reduction in pay. With all that, this resolution decides that the non-represented should get an increase in the salary bands when we, as general staff, has been going in backwards. So even at the CFMEA level during our negotiation, we have been told that we, as managers, should step up, show leadership, should lead by example, yet what we're seeing is quite the contrary. It just seems very unfair to, not just my members, but to other members of this city, who, when we gave up to try to make sure that the lights are on, that we now see this going in front of council for adoption, and it just seems very unfair. Thank you.
Steven. Dee Barnes. Then Dee, after you, is Marina, and then Shelley.
Good morning. Dee Barnes, Fresno City Employees Association President, 2607 Fresno Street, Suite D. I submitted a letter to the city clerk's office yesterday morning. You guys should have all gotten that in your packet. I also emailed it to you yesterday afternoon. In my letter, I asked that you either direct staff to restore the types of benefits that were taken away from groups like CFMEA, Local 39, and IBW, or you revise, I believe it was about five sections in the salary reso to mirror the types of reductions in benefits that the other groups have gotten. You guys hear me use the word fair all the time, and I have friends that tell me it comes once a year in October, but I would just like to say, it's been very disappointing the last five years to see how adversarial the relationship has become between employees and managers, and it's this kind of thing that just makes that worse. We're losing staff because of the type of working conditions that we have. Morale is low. Most of us are committed to this community. We live here, we work here, we play here. We believe in Fresno, and most of us have stepped up, and when the city needed us to give back, we gave back. But we would like to feel that it's a shared sacrifice from the very top all the way down, and employees are not feeling that. I'd like to see us get past that, and I believe if things are on a good track right now, and you don't have to ask for, from every employee, then you need to give back to the ones that have given. So I hope you will really consider what you're hearing from the employees, what I put in my letter. This is an important item, and I appreciate your taking a look at that, so thank you.
Thank you, Dee.
Good morning, council members. Marina Magdaleno, 4644 West Jaclyn, 93722. I'm here to speak against the salary resolution as it is presented, and, and primarily for some of the same reasons that the two previous speakers, you know, spoke to you about. We had two years of contentious negotiations with the city of Fresno, and it was a very difficult contract. If you recall, our members voted it down the first time, and it was very difficult to get it to pass by our membership. I put myself out there to the membership, and I assured them, because the city manager assured me, and he's not here, so I can't look at him face to face, he assured me that everyone would have the same cuts that the membership, my members got, that the CFMEA got, and other bargaining units that have gone before me. We specifically talked about the two holidays that our people lost, that they're not losing here. We talked about the health benefits, the amount that my members have to pay, that they're not going to have to pay. We talked about the workers' comp. We had, we took a cut there, and, and I'll tell you that when members go out on workers' comp, and I realize that it's not the, you know, the, the, the responsibility, but these employees that get hurt on the job, they get hurt because of the work that they do, and they can't make it on that workers' comp pay that they get. You know, but setting aside all of that, we were assured that those, everything that we took, that everyone else was going to take. Salary, you know what? Management deserves every penny that they get, but so does everyone else, and when you are giving, you know, 14, 15%, eight, almost a 19% salary increase, it sends the wrong messages to the people. We have been told over and over and over again that we were on the verge of bankruptcy, that we were on the verge of not being able to afford things. We are facing many obstacles that are coming up here. We've got water rates, we've got trash rates, we've got all these things that are, that are going to be hiking up, and, and you, and you're going to give salary increases that are this amount of money? It is not the right thing to tell the general public, it is not the right thing to tell the employees of this city. And, and again, you know, I don't like to call you guys liars because it, it puts us in an adversarial role, but when you lie to me, when you tell me something that is not so, come on, guys. I urge you today to vote no on this issue. This is not a good message to send out to the city of Fresno, to the employees. You're about ready to impose on fire, and how do you justify this? You cannot justify this salary reso as it is. Thank you very much.
Good morning, council. My name is Shelley Morrison. I am CFMEA president, and I reside at 15695 Watts Valley Road in Sanger, California. And I'm just asking you to take a good look at the salary reso. We, same as you've heard already, but the manager stepped up, and they wanted to lead by example, and they gave away several concessions, lots of their leave balances, and we were told that the non-rep would be giving up the same. And now, in the salary reso, it shows that they're not giving, being asked to give up the same concessions that we did. It's very, very disheartening when we will have employees that work under us that'll be earning more leave and higher salaries than we are. Anyways, please consider this. Thank you.
Shelley. Are there, I just said, thank you. Are there any other members of the public?
Good morning. Brian Horn, 2591 East Sage Wave, Fresno, California. I reside in Lee Brans District. I would also like to tell you guys, I want to appreciate all the efforts that you've done. I was on the negotiation team for the CFMEA, and I guess my biggest heartburn on this is I really don't want to see our members get upset, and I think some of the things in the salary resolution will upset them. We took our lumps just like everybody else, we understand we should take them, and we were okay with that. We're seeing some things that we were asked to cut that others aren't cutting, which I think is, is a big heartburn. So a lot of it is the time off and the benefits and, and some of the other things. So I would urge you to consider this when you consider the salary resolution, and I think everybody else has said everything else, so thank you.
Rick Stites. Currently, I represent approximately 500 city employees, and just for, have a few minutes. My subjects have already been covered by other people. I just want to point out a few things for the 500 people that I'm associated with. For the last seven years, none of them have had a cost of living increase. The city continues to ask for concessions as we speak today. While some unsupervised, unrepresented employees by this resolution will receive double-digit One of my favorite presidents, years ago, Ronald Reagan said, "All boats rise with the tide." I ask for equity and fairness in a resolution concerning salaries. Fairness and equity, gentlemen.
Any other members of the public that would like to address this item? All right, Councilman Shong.
Thank you, Council President. I have a couple of questions. City Attorney, in terms of the salary resolution, and please clarify this for me, that the council would have to adopt at least the tax verbiage to allow, or allow staff to, to pay the current salaries, correct?
Right. We need a salary resolution in place so that finance can cause the employees to be paid. It doesn't have to be exactly what's in front of you, and you wouldn't have to approve the changes in the salary resolutions.
Okay, so, I guess that's why I'm somewhat confused. To do the tax, to agree to the tax, but not necessarily the salary resolution, so what, what do staff then, I guess, would pay?
Right. Well, the salary resolution doesn't give anybody a raise. It doesn't do that. It sets ranges of salaries. And so you could approve the salary resolution if you didn't want to approve the increase in ranges, then you could approve it with the prior fiscal year's range remaining in place. And you could bring it back at a later date for consideration if you wanted to do that.
All right. Does, does the tax resolution, does the tax agreement have to also be done, is there a sensitivity to, to the timeframe as to the tax approval?
I believe it's necessary for people to be paid starting next fiscal year.
Which is July, right?
July 1, right.
Okay. So that at least has to agree?
We need something in place, yes.
You know, council, city manager, did you want to add something to that?
Maybe, I'd like to make a couple of comments and then offer up-
Maybe, I'd like to make a couple of comments and then offer up something for the council's consideration. First of all, I, you know, it's interesting that, that I'm hearing comments, especially from one particular bargaining unit, given the increases that they've received over the last three to four years, in comparison to the unrepresented employees who have received nothing, actually took a three percent reduction. Which is my point, the changes in the salary resolution are being driven in large part because of compaction issues associated with these other labor agreements that have pushed salaries up at the same time that other positions have been, not had increases. So, it is really, and it's interesting because labor always talks about compaction. Well, in great, to great extent, some of these adjustments are increasing range, are being driven by facts that subordinate employees underneath department heads, or reporting department heads, are making as much, or almost as much as a department head. Second point I'd like to make is that the reason there haven't been any challenges in the current, for current, or for Unit 2 unrepresented employees, is because, and I think, quite frankly, the union representatives would appreciate, or at least should appreciate, that I believe, like all of our employees, that the unrepresented employees should have an opportunity to meet with me and express any concerns over changes in working conditions, terms and conditions of employment, before I just unilaterally impose, which we've done in the past. There are changes forthcoming, but the time I need to meet with these employees over those changes, I didn't have enough time to do that and get it into the salary resolution. So with that, nobody's getting a raise that's going to put us over the point in which they're going to exceed the current range. So if council wants to adopt the salary resolution, except for the proposed changes to Unit 2, that will be fine. Because the only thing in Unit 2 is just increasing the range. So you can just choose to adopt the salary resolution and leave the Unit 2 salary ranges where they are.
No, and, and thank you, Bruce. And for me, it was part of the discussion too, but maybe I'm trying to compare the larger budget discussion with this move as well. I mean, we just, at least heard yesterday at the State of the City, that there's going to be some line item vetoes coming from our mayor. And, and, you know, that, that could have changed the dynamic of the budget. And we haven't approved the budget technically. So why would I, to me, at least, so if we haven't looked at the budget, see the changes, what those things are, why would I approve any resolution on any salary right now, until that budget issue gets discussed? So that, maybe that's the wrong kind of comparative. I'm, I'm, I'm lying into approving that, give the tax amendment or whatever, the tax agreement to allow staff to move and pay our, our employees. But I'm not right now in line, because we just heard that, you know, there's still line item vetoes to come, and this council's going to have to definitely look at those budget discussions in terms of the overall impact. So, that, that's where, where I'm leaning, saying, I'm, I'm leaning towards the tax amendment to allow our personnel or HR to, to pay what they're paying our salary, but in terms of approving any resolution? I'm not sure I'm there.
Well, Mr. Cardell, is there any impact, other than the unrepresented, we've always said we can put that to aside, is there any impacts to any other employees who are covered by collective bargaining agreements? Is there any impact if the council chooses not to adopt this salary resolution?
No, there, there's no impacts. There, there are some title changes. There are some new classifications, but the sour ranges are consistent with what has been established for the predecessor classification. So if, if we could adopt those changes for Unit 3 and 13, that, that would be very helpful for us.
On the other hand, council could choose not to deal with this today and table it and have no really net effect, other than the changes in titles that were discussed with collective, with whatever union representative that there was.
Correct.
Now, council, if you want to table the item, table the item.
Council, as you already heard, the discussion is not going to have any impact. Why the rush? We still have a larger discussion. This could be brought forth at that time and get it done. And so, you know, I mean, it's already been, been stated that we're going to have to deal with, with some line item vetoes that are going to be coming forth. And I think it should be discussed in a broader discussion, whether we believe that's going to have a direct or indirect impact. That would be my motion, council. And I think it's wise that we should be able to have those discussions first and see if there is a larger budget issue that we may have to look at. So, city clerk, I want to make a motion to, to table the item until the, until we have a better idea what this line item veto would look like on the budget.
I'll second.
You have a motion to continue the item and a second?
Table, table the item.
To table the item. And a second from Councilman Olivier. Is there any other discussion? Councilman Olivier, you, you've punched in. I don't know if it was just to do that same thing, but, okay. Bruce, you had punched in, was, did you already, okay?
Yes, council. To clarify, is the motion that we do not have a salary resolution in place on July 1st, or that we maintain the status quo as of July 1st, and then bring back any changes later?
Is that clarification? I mean...
That was my understanding, city attorney, that the status quo will remain until which time the other changes would be brought back.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Baines.
Thanks, council president. Just, we'll, I reserve my comments for when we, you know, we'll see how this vote goes. And if, if the item's going to be tabled, then I'll reserve my comments for that time.
Okay. Councilman Brand.
What are the actual numbers of unrepresented workers? Approximately? How many people would fit in this, the unrepresented classification?
The unrepresented employees, there's approximately shy of 100.
100 out of roughly 3,000 employees?
Correct.
So the other 2,900 are represented by different bargaining groups?
Correct.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We have a motion to table the item and a second. Screen is clear. Let's vote. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion to table the item passes 7-0.
To be clear, council, the motion was to table and maintain status quo, right? Okay.
All right. Now we are on to the 10 o'clock scheduled item, a hearing to reconsider rezone application and related environmental assessment. That's in Council District 5, and it's from our Department and Resource, Development and Resource Management Department.
Good morning, council president. Council members, Bruce Barnes with the Development Department. You have before you right now a request by the Fresno City Housing Authority to rezone their property from the R1 Zone District to the R2 Zone District. And this would allow the Housing Authority then to, the ability to build 14 more apartment units in their existing Cedar Heights complex. At the Planning Commission hearing on June 4th, no one spoke in opposition. Therefore, staff does recommend approval and has nothing more to add.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to go out to the public, and then we'll come back up to council. Are there any members of the public? So this, actually, this is the 10 o'clock item. I've got cards for the 10:10 item. If any members of the public would like to address this item, please come up to the microphone. All right. Seeing none. Councilman Quintero, this is in District 5.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is adding on to already existing housing that, that presently, well, it's been there since probably the 1950s, and this is a new addition to, to it. I met with the developers, and everything's great. It's going to help the area. Motion to approve.
You've got a motion to approve and a second from Councilman Olivier. The screen is clear. What's that? Oh, it was Lee. Councilman Brand made the second. The screen is clear. Let's vote. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Now we are on to the 10:10 timed item, which is a hearing to, to consider rezone application and related environmental assessment for a property located on the west side of North Winery. And that is also from our DARM Department.
Good morning again, council and members. This morning, we have before you a request for a rezone that will in fact lead to a possible approval, or likely approval of a tentative tract map that will create three This is the subject property on Winery. On the north is Washington. On the south is McKenzie. It's a quite, quite a large lot, by the way, and quite a wide lot. This rezone application would rezone the property from RA, which is residential ag, to R1, single-family residential. If the rezone is approved, it will facilitate the approval of three additional parcels on the subject property. And staff does recommend also that you consider an environmental assessment for this project. The general plan designates this as medium-density residential. You can see that property there outlined in red is RA at this time. Most of the properties in the area are, to the west and to the south, are R1 already. So that would bring them in line with the rest of the area. This would be the proposed map that the applicant has filed and would be approved subject to the approval of the rezone. So, on the background, this does meet our infill policies. This is an ideal infill project. If the project is approved, the developer would be required to install infrastructure and pay development fees. And that includes installing curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and so on, as well as paying fees, like flood control fees, or school, school fees, and so on. On May 21st, the Fresno Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the project as presented. We held two neighborhood meetings, and the neighbors were by and large opposed to the small lot size and to the number of lots. But the developer did argue that he needed the additional lots to spread the cost out in order for the project to pencil out. There, no compromise was reached, and we concluded, or they concluded, that the commission would make a recommendation to the council. And that recommendation, of course, is for approval. One of the appellants indicated that there was a lotting pattern up and down Winery of having two lots, and each one of those bubbles, so to speak, with a house facing on each street, and desired that that be the same thing, where, the same concept where the yellow circle is. And I would point out that that lot is 100 feet wide. Those other lots are only 60 feet wide. This is the lot sizes. The lot sizes, south of McKenzie, is about 7,200 square feet. The average size of these lots would be about 6,700 square feet, if you average the four lots. So staff does recommend approval of the environmental document of finding a conformity, and we do recommend approval of the rezone. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bruce. I'm going to go out to the public real quick. I've got some cards of people that wanted to talk about this item, so I'm just going to call them in order. Bob Jungman, you're up first. After Bob is Cynthia Silva. And go ahead and make your way forward, Bob. After Cynthia is Ruben Silva, and then we have a couple others.
Well, I would give you, I made some more copies. I'm sorry, my name's Bob Jungman. My property's at 4887 East, East Nevada, which is right around the corner from, where'd that thing go? That map? You guys still have it?
Yeah. We'll bring it right back up.
Thank you.
There we go.
Thank you. Okay. So it's right around the corner from that. But if you look at that, man, and I have some more copies, but they're the same thing that, that he showed you, so I didn't see any reason to pass them out again. We feel pretty passionate about this, because this is the neighborhood that is there are all, if you look at, to use his words, those bubbles. I don't know if you can find that screen or not. But all of these are two, two lots on that whole street. Two lots on this one, two lots on this one, two lots on this one. And one of the things that Bruce, I'm sorry, Mr. Barnes, said is that north of McKenzie, hello, south of McKenzie, they are a little smaller. Well, let's look at north of McKenzie, right across the street to the east, to the north, to whichever direction you want to go. All that neighborhood, and to use your mayor's favorite phrase, is infill, okay? I want to infill it also. But I want to infill it to make it make sense. I want to infill it with, what's the word I'm looking for here? With compatibility. Thank you. I want them to all look alike. Those gentlemen want to build three houses in a space designed for one? I mean, that, that lot size is no bigger than your house, you know? And nobody else, nobody here lives in this neighborhood. So, we all live in bigger lots, bigger houses. And the people that you're seeing here, we all have these size, you know, larger spaces than he wants to put in. He wants to put them in there like apartments, you know? And if, that's like the project you had before, where you wanted to put all those, those Section 8 units downtown? I'm for that. But this neighborhood is not a Section 8 area. Let's not make it one. And, oh, I can tell you some more, but he's pretty well laid it out. We all feel, we want you guys to feel, have any of you been there? Been to this area at all, in any area? You have. Okay. And I know that Clint has, because he's been down here several times with us. This is a nice, quiet neighborhood. We don't need, I probably heard a bell, I don't know. We don't need this thing all crammed into, to a tight place, just because he wants to build three houses in a space for one. We think it's wrong. Anybody have any more questions, or anything that I didn't say, or whatever? We believe in, in this city and taking care of it and doing the right thing at all times. And the right thing is to do the infill, do it in conformity. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, too.
Cynthia? You're up next.
I might leave that up, if you would, please.
I'm Cynthia Silva, and I live just around the corner on Washington, about three houses from the winery. And I feel that it doesn't conform with the neighborhood, and that I don't think three houses will fit on that lot and fit in our neighborhood.
Closer to the mic.
I just don't feel that it would conform with the neighborhood as it's set up, and I live just around the, the street, on about three houses from the winery. And I don't feel that it'll fit in with our neighborhood.
Thank you, Cynthia. And Ruben?
Okay. I live in the house with the pool on the other side, which is 4878 East Washington. The street right above us is Garden Street, and all those houses are condensed, you know what I'm saying? But I'm, there's a lot of activity going with the younger generations. From Garden Street downward towards Winery, it's very quiet. Now, you're planning to put three houses real condensed right there, and I'm figuring that on Garden Street and above, one time I heard there was a shop chop in that area. Now, and there's been a killing, a couple killings in that area, too. The reason I know is because whenever I come around the corner, there's people putting flowers on the corner. Okay. If you put three houses there, that means you can have a lot more people condense. That means the crime rate will go up. You're going to have more patrolmen, where before, we didn't have that problem. Soon as you pass Garden Street going towards Winery, it's very quiet. My grandkids go out there and play. My grandkids go out there and play, the people across the street bringing their kids on the bicycles. Every once in a while, we have cars going real fast, but there's speed bumps, unfortunately, right there in front of my house. Why are you going to put three houses condensed next to each other, have more people going through there, where we didn't have it before? I think it's a bad idea, and that doesn't sound good. And I think we should have, that empty lot could probably hold two houses, but three is getting a little dense right there. And what kind of people are we going to put in there? Young kids or apartment complex? It's too condensed. I think, I like it the way it is. I can go along with two houses, but not three.
Thank you, Ruben. Next, we have Christine, and then after Christine, Christine Loyah. After Christine is Sarah Rojas. And after Sarah, we have open-mic opportunity. Christine.
Good morning. I reside on the house catty-corner from the adjacent, well, from the lot, it's 4904 East McKenzie, and I am against this for three homes. Three homes will not comply with that lot at all. Like Ruben had mentioned, there is a lot of speeding through there. There is two stop signs on that corner, those two corners. People do not mind to stop there. There has been accidents through there. With all this going to go on, we have to think of the reality of what's going to happen in that neighborhood. More crime is going to happen in that neighborhood, not just the other night. There was a shooting right outside my house. We fear for the sake of our children, the sake of our grandchildren that are going to be here in the neighborhood. We just want you guys to consider and take into reality of what can happen in our neighborhood. Whether it's an apartment complex or three houses, it's just not going to comply with our neighborhood. It's not. All the houses, yes, they have good quality space and privacy, which is perfect, but you think about how these two houses, these three houses, are they going to have enough privacy? Are they going to have enough lawn for their children to play on? Are they going to have whatever it is that they would like in their neighborhood and for their homes? No. I just would like for you guys to take into the consideration of what can go on in our neighborhood. Like you said, Paul, you've been in our neighborhood, correct? How do you think that would look in our neighborhood? Do you, do you honestly think by placing three houses in one single lot that contained one house, do you think that would be good for us? I don't think so. Just please, I ask you guys, take it into consideration of thinking of the reality of, of everything that's going to go on. Thank you.
Good morning, councilwoman. My name is Sarah Rojas. My husband and I reside at 4909 East McKenzie. I am representing my husband, myself, and the neighbors surrounding the area of North Winery, East Washington, and McKenzie to discuss the rezone application, R3, R13-014. We are all very opposed to this proposed charge. The lot in question is 0.61 acres, which is originally designated for construction for one residential home. We are all in agreement that building two homes is acceptable, but not three. Building three homes on that lot does not conform to the existing structure of our neighborhood. The existing lots are 120 by 2, by 120 and 120 by 60. This proposal will change the originality of our beautiful neighborhood to more like a subdivision of tract homes. The homes surrounding us are all custom-built homes. We urge you to not allow the building of three homes on that lot. The homes will have lesser value than the existing homes due to the size of the lot and square footage of the homes. This will surely depreciate the value of our homes. The three homes will be tightly squeezed together with little room for parking, and we will see more cars parked on the street and lawns. Please do not allow these investors to rezone this property, to build three homes there and change the way, and change our way of life. We thank you for your listening to our concerns and hope you will make the right decision and not allow this, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. All right, that's all the cards that were turned in for this item. If there's anybody else that would like to speak on this item, please come forward and...
I have a card of this.
I had, I also had three letters that he has here.
I turned the card in. It says subject property on your card.
Yes, so we just, these letters are just now available, they're outside of the window, right, outside?
Put on the record, yes, but you can read them if you want.
Okay, Sarah, you turned them in, the letters are so late, they're not going to officially go on the record, but we're going to pass them out to the councilman. And, and that's the same, each councilman will get those also. But they, but it's a little too late to get them actually on the record, but it's, the councilman will be able to see those. Thank you.
They're officially unofficial.
Yes, they're officially unofficial. All right, Barbara, so we're talking about this one rezone neighborhood.
I understand. Mr. President, you're part of that Tea Party, and I know you know right from wrong.
Thank you.
You're the president. This is a capitalist society. Look at your budget, look at all those budget books and all those capital projects back there. They're taking these people land. This lady says three is too much, and two, they will accept. I say put none of them up in there. Everybody around here's got these same people, we're going to be in another country before you even know it. And I'm going to talk about the fire departments when I get through with this one. This don't make sense. You see the way everything is going. Swanson be gone pretty soon, but she got all these things already lined out for you guys to approve, and she don't even treat you guys right. Let, let the people be heard. We still, we the people of the United States are the form of a more perfect union, the one fought in all these wars, the one made all this possible, the one that voted for you all. Then we're going to let a handful of people come here, we don't know what country, where they coming from, and I'm not prejudiced. I was born right here in Fresno, and I'm 67 years old, and I would fight, too. Don't let these people come in here and bring a proposal up, take these people land, do what they want to do, like they doing in frying up there, the garage is too short. They using you. Look at your book, your budget book in the back, look at all those capital improvement projects. Swanson getting ready to get out of here and leave y'all with a big debt, wouldn't vote for what you guys wanted. No, let the people be heard. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
It's we the people.
Thank you, Barbara.
Good morning, Mr. President, councilmembers. My name is Mike Hamsey, I'm with Harvest International Inc. We're the applicant on this project, and I'm speaking on behalf of my client who's present with us, with Nico Development Company. This is not the first project that Nico Development Company did as an infill in this area. We've been working in the city of Fresno and trying to use empty lots and make them into an infill area.
Yeah.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, better.
This project came to, in front, in front of the city council about 10 years ago for an apartment complex. The general plan, the general plan designation is for high density. My client is looking at the benefit of developing the property that will meet the neighborhood area. The three lots that we're proposing, the minimum lot size will be averaged outside about 6,500 square feet, which is similar to the lots across the street. The issues that we tried to address with the neighbors, we had sent about 61 notices to all the neighbors, and we only heard from about four or five of them, the same neighbors that we met with at least twice before. The issue of putting only two lots on that, on that property will be cost-effective and prohibitive, we won't be able to develop it until it be sitting empty like it's said for the last 20 years. We met with the, with the staff, with the city, and we tried to develop a project that's economical and beneficial to the neighborhood. We will have driveways and two-car garages, 6,500 square foot lots, is a similar lot that is already approved in the city of Fresno, and it's all located throughout the north area, and if we do anything less than that, it won't be cost-effective, we won't be able to develop the project. We will, we will recommend approval, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this rezoning item? All right, then, Councilman Olivier, this is in your district.
Thank you very much, Council President. You know, this is a very difficult decision, and that's because this, this council has over and over reaffirmed its commitment to infill. And especially for me, because I have a large number of constituents who ask me to provide infill. We're told through the general plan that infill is the key to reducing the strain on our firefighters, reducing the strain on our police department, allowing people to, to have more access to parks when we vote for infill. And this council has affirmed its, its support of this entire concept because of its passing of the general plan. That being said, we're confronted with a situation here where this project is, clearly does not fit the neighborhood. As Mr. Youngman illustrated, you have an entire neighborhood, a southern neighborhood, and at the end of each block, there are two homes. This would change that. And so I've had a number of meetings with the, with the builder. I have a personal relationship with Mr. Hamsey, we go to church together. I know that they're going to build a good project wherever they build it. I know that they're people of integrity, and I know that they want to do what's best for the city, but they also want to sell homes. So this is a situation where it's, and I know that in a number of meetings with constituents, we had more people and different people, Mrs. Bustamante was here at some of our community meetings, and she's not here today. But it's, it's very clear to me that my constituents don't welcome this project in, in this neighborhood on the grounds that, that it would not fit, and I would have to agree with my constituents. So in, in this case, at these meetings, we had Bruce there from planning, we had the builder there, and we discussed some compromises perhaps. But unfortunately, the, the residents and the builder were unable to, to reach a compromise on this, on this project. So we were, you know, we're, we're at loggerheads right now. It's, it's either thumbs up or thumbs down on this project, but in this case, I have to side with my constituents who, who are demanding to, to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood and not put, not have the four houses on that, on that, on that block's end cap, if you will. And it's, well, there's, there's one existing, and, and if you have any questions, I think that Mrs. Rojas drew a good drawing here. So you have the, the existing home, which will be rehabbed and improved, and then you have the, the, south of that existing house, three new homes built. And again, it's, it's ready to go with the planning department, it's consistent with the, the whole infill concept, but there are intangibles, and this is one of those intangibles where I don't believe that the, the development will fit the, the character of this neighborhood. So the, the choice is yours, council, and I, I hope to hear good discussion on this, but I'm going to have to let somebody else make this motion because I'm not in support. Thank you.
And Francine, you had... Okay, cool. Oh, all right, thanks. Councilman Baines.
Thanks, Council President. Prior to hearing the public testimony, I probably would have supported this for all of the reasons that Member Olivier said, our consistency and dedication to infill development and the general plan. But to be quite honest with you, it's very clear to me that the neighborhood does not, is not supportive of this. And without making a very long, very long remarks, I try very, very hard to be mindful of the needs of the community and respectful of the needs of the community. When you all were testifying, I simply thought about my own community where I had some vacant lots, and if I would be here in objection like you were, if someone wanted to build a product that did not conform to the neighborhood where I lived, and the answer to that question is I would certainly be here with you all in testimony. So I won't be supportive of the rezone either. I think that while we attempt to figure out this infill question, it can't be a blanket policy. We certainly do need to learn how to work with our communities and be respectful of where communities, where people are living, and the type of development that people want in their communities, so I won't be supportive either.
Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you. I join in Councilmember Baines' comments, and if this were a two-unit development, I could support it, but as it stands, I cannot support this.
Councilman Brand.
Just a point of clarification, this is not affordable housing, yes or no? Anything on this, this open market?
No.
It is?
Open market.
Okay. Just kind of echo what Councilman Baines said, you know, we've been talking for two years on, and we have not adopted the general plan yet, we will hopefully before the year's over, but infill. These are the challenges we're going to see time and time again, is that you're trying to integrate high density and different development types within existing neighborhoods. We saw it about a month ago in, in the new neighborhood, Copper River, where they're trying to put eight-foot driveways because you have 4,000, 3,000 square foot lots. Though I understand certainly the, the issues with the residents here, but the bigger issue for the council is that we better be prepared to have a way to implement the general plan that we all talk about, and all the smart growth and all the other stuff, and one by one, we, this is, we're going to have these types of situations almost identical. And I, you know, I'm, I have mixed feelings on this issue, and I respect the residents, and I hope maybe the developer might find a compromise, but again, the caveat for everybody here, we better be prepared in the next couple of years. Thank you.
All right, the screen is clear. I still don't believe I've heard a motion for an action. Council, in, for time's sake, do we have a motion?
What I like to do is, it's obvious to, not to support for this project is maybe ask this to be continued where the developer can work, if he is willing to work with the neighbors, to maybe, I heard one suggestion was to reduce it to two houses and not three houses. So if the developer's willing to do that, would, it's your district, would you consider that?
I would, I would like to see a compromise on this because I would like to see a compromise on everything. So in this case, I would be happy to sit down again with the residents and the, and the builder to, to work this out. So I'll, I'll make a motion to continue.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to continue and a second. The screen is clear. This, yeah.
Continue in what sense? If the project comes back like it, like it is, then...
Well, no, I, I, let's see if...
Do you want to put some caveats in there?
Well, let's see if the, if the builder, I mean, you own the land, right, Mike? Builder owns the land?
Yes, the builder owns the land, and they already remodeled the existing house, and it's, it's all economics. What we're trying to do is put three new homes, it's going to be selling at a value that's compatible to the market area and the neighborhood. So if we, we'll try to talk to the developer, do our market analysis again, and see if we can only put two houses and still pay for all the infrastructure that the city's charging us, or if we can get maybe some waiver on some of those fees, we might be able to make...
able to make it cost effective because you don't want to go and lose money and build homes. Okay, I'll try again. The owner, the property is already owned, and we already improved the existing house, and it's down to the fees that the city's charging. If we can get some of the fees waived and worked with us, we might be able to put two homes instead of three and still make it cost effective so we can sell those homes for the same value that the neighborhood has. You cannot go and put about $200,000 home in this neighborhood where the only, the sale of the homes are only $150,000. You'd be losing $50,000. So we would like to continue it, and we will see if we can work out some economical solution to it. We want to develop the area, we want to keep developing infill areas, but there is a cost effectiveness that doesn't make it cost effective to build anything within that neighborhood.
What Mr. Hamse is saying is that some of the fees that are imposed on this builder by the city make it, they have to build this amount of houses to make this deal pencil out, and a lot of that has to do with the fees.
Yes.
So what he's saying is he's open to a compromise because if the city can work with him and then allow him to build less houses, and I see Mrs. Rojas going like that to me. So are you willing to sit with the builder and Bruce again in the city and work it out? Because I think that, you know, I've seen the trash and the mattresses and the tires on the lot, and I know that you try to keep the lot clean, but it's been a dirt lot for, what, fifteen, twenty years? About seventeen years, yeah. So I think construction and people working and a new home there is good for the district, it's good for the neighborhood, but I want to be sensitive to the wishes of the constituents that are there. So that would be my motion, would be to sit down again with the builder and city officials and figure out if we can move forward. If we can, that's great, and if we can't, well, then we can't. But that would be my motion.
Thank you.
All right, then.
Yeah, until, continue to a time uncertain.
Councilman Baines, did that fully answer your question? All right. So we have a motion to continue and a second, and the screen is clear. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven-zero to continue that item. All right. Now we are on to item... Councilman Baines, did you punch in?
I'm going to make sure I say first.
Okay. Two F?
Oh, two F.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm going to bounce back to do two F right now. Yeah. We had to cover some of this to go back to two F. Yeah. All right. Now we are going to go to general admin item two F. That's an approve and assignment of the home program agreement to Feltonia, which is at West and Cedar Heights, and that is from our department, or, excuse me, our Development and Resource Management Department.
Karina Nunez, Housing Division. I'm so sorry you couldn't hear me earlier.
No, we're not, we can't hear you any better than last time. Can you raise that mic and/or?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Just to recap on the scattered site project, the city of Fresno Housing and Community Development Division received a request from TSF Investments to assign its home program agreement from TSF Investments LLC to Feltonia West slash Cedar Heights Scattered Site Project, I'm sorry, Cedar Heights Scattered Site LP for the development of a scattered site project, which includes Feltonia West and Cedar Heights. If the assignment is approved as recommended, TSF and the Housing Authority of the City of Fresno will become partners of the newly created Feltonia West Cedar Heights Scattered Site LP. Upon assignment of the 2.1 million in home program funds for Feltonia West project, will become part of the public subsidy needed to secure an award of approximately 6.1 million in low-income housing tax credits for the development at both sites. In addition, an estimated 870,000 in former redevelopment agency funding and a $90,000 seller financing loan from the Housing Authority will make up the balance of the total, of the total for, will make up the balance of the total. The estimated cost is 9.25 million with an anticipated completion date of May 2016. And lastly, I would just like to state that the SEQA for the Cedar Heights site was approved with the rezone item at 10 o'clock. And both developers are here to answer any project-specific questions.
All right, thank you. We're going to go out to the public and see if anybody would like to comment on this item, two F.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Baines, this is our district money right here. The West Fresno, I'm looking at you, Mr. President. The West Fresno, it goes southwest Fresno and northwest, so all this is going to the north side of the town. And the redevelopment, the city council was the redevelopment agency, the city council was the redevelopment agency board, and the city council was, the city council that we elected before. And accessory board was, Mr. Baines was the president of that accessory board, but it's all tied up. We don't have accessory board anymore, so they're trying to get their projects through. And I'm listening to this lady right here talking about the homes funding, that goes to the CBG, goes to all them fundings and money that we have set aside for the poor people or the people that's in really need. And I heard her talk about it's going to be for low and modern housing apartments for the people. The way they do that, Mr. President and the board, they'll use that low and modern housing for the people for a certain period of time, maybe five or six years, then it goes back to the original price what the developer wants. All this is a conspiracy. It should be a law against it, the Housing Authority and the city of Fresno and their housing revitalization. That's the summer mayor asked this project, they're trying to get all these projects through before she leave here, if she leave here going anywhere. You might be not mayor, she still be up in here because this is not right for to push all these projects through when they know that they're not right. And you guys have been here a long time, and Mr. Sal knows it too, and the rest of the board, you guys already know this. The projects that come up here says redevelopment, says the Housing Authority, what housing authority is it? We got Fresno Housing Authority, we got Fresno County Housing Authority, we got Fresno City and County Housing Authority, we got so many housing authorities using all that money, like that 20 acres we supposed to have for that California marks out there, Hope Six, it never came up because they was using that money illegal. They're not, it's not there. Any project that come up here with that home financing, CBG money, and then with the redevelopment, housing development, accessory office, because Marlene Murphy, she's still up there working for the redevelopment, trying to get rid of all this money, it's not there, and they're trying to use you. I advise you to bring them back to the table and talk to them and get the real contract of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public like to address this item? All right. Councilman Baines or Councilman Quintero, this home fund project is in both of your districts. Do either, either of you guys?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and, of course, I'll, Councilman Quintero can make remarks as well. But I just wanted to speak in support of this project. It's been really creative, I think, on the part of the Housing Authority to work with our private developers to bring these two projects to bear. We're certainly supportive of them going after tax credits. It's funny, this is another infill project, and it's difficult, and we see that. You know, these projects wouldn't work without tax credits, to be quite honest with you. So I'm in full support, and I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and the screen is clear. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes five, or, excuse me, six-zero. Right then. City clerk, do we want to tackle the, do we want to tackle the RDA stuff now? With Marlene is, Marlene is here? All right. And I believe that is, well, I turn that, I turn that over to you, Councilman Baines.
Thanks, Council President. We'll now call the joint meeting of the successor agency, the city of Fresno's Housing Successor and the Fresno Revitalization Corporation, to order. We have two items, two items today. The first item is to approve an amended and restated owner participation agreement in the amount of 870,000 from TFS Investments LLC to Feltonia West Cedar Heights Scattered Site LP for the development of a scattered site project. Marlene?
Thank you. This is the companion to the item that you've just heard. We're recommending that the amendment and restatement of the owner participation agreement that we, the successor agency have, successor housing agency has with Feltonia West. The potential result is the creation of more affordable units, more covenants, and leveraging over $6 million in tax credits. So with that, unless you have questions, we would recommend that you approve this item.
Thanks, Marlene. I'll now take it out to the public. Any public comment on this item?
Oh.
Okay. I see Barbara Hunt.
I'm really glad that this is happening so the people out here and all over the United States and the world can see how our government work. Now, we elected you to be the, Mr. President, please look at me, please. We elected you all to be working for the city of Fresno. That's what you're here for. Now you got to wear another hat, and that's the accessory office, and it's the same people that we got Marlene Murphy, that's the redevelopment, and they're supposed to be gone. Now Sal is going to agree with everything that he's saying because all those signs in my district says southeast. How the hell I get to be southeast when I'm 67 years old, born in southwest? Look at those streets. That's where all of our money going over here to the north side, all the elections, everything is illegal, that's fraud. I got to roll that with the state of California right now. Sal ain't gonna never say nothing. He knows this because he said, Barbara, I can't bring it up myself by all those signs because he's getting all of our money. All them, all them signs over there say east, by Edison High School, East California, East Garrett, East Grove, East Bryan, how the hell we get to be east of here? I don't understand this process. They ain't always going to agree with him, but the people don't agree with him. Kids out there getting killed, everybody's getting murdered, no jobs, no parking recreation, nothing for us to do out there but take our land and agree for everything else. Marlene Murphy ought to be ashamed of herself, she's trying to get rid of that accessory office, but that's those capitalist folks up in here. We not capitalism up in here, we still America. Your folks going to be glad to hear about this one, and I'm glad to see Baines up here talking about he's a successor agent. We didn't vote for him to be no successor agent. We brought, and you, to be, the board, the whole board, we didn't like, we didn't say for none of you guys to be a successor agent. The redevelopment was the redevelopment, the city council's a redevelopment agency board. So where's all of our money from redevelopment? If you guys was the board, who's the boss of that redevelopment? Where's all of our money for the city of Fresno? We didn't hire you to be redevelopment agency board. All those girls in the office in there got all those records, clerks, city redevelopment, accessory office, Fresno Joint Powers Funding Authority, that's the ballpark. We wearing so many hats it don't make sense, and you guys are voting for it, and all you guys is involved, so that means that you guys involved with a conspiracy. And that's a lawyer right there, Mr. Capriol, and he'll tell you what I'm talking about. So keep it on. I want to know where's our money for the city of Fresno for all these projects, and you're done with mayor trying to get rid of and approve, and Marlene Murphy took Dan St. Patrick's job in the first place when he retired, giving houses away for a dollar, gave Gap away to them for a dollar. Don't even have a name for the city of Fresno. City of Fresno, real name incorporated 1885, 1901, was the Avenue. Next thing I seen was out there on Manchester where they sent all of our beautiful downtown. And then I want to address how these developers and all them guys got our downtown, and I seen a book, 1976 General Obligation Book, where they bought their tax increments. I want to know how did the federal government allow them to buy those tax increments? Why wasn't no money put back downtown so we will have a beautiful downtown? Because the money was there for them. I want you guys to wake up. They don't know because they don't know politics. I've been in city hall so many years, it don't make sense, and I could write a book about it. Thank you, sir.
All right. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais and entertain a motion. It's been moved. Do we have a second? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes six-zero with Member Olivier absent. The next item we'll take is the successor agency, the redevelopment agency, considering adopt findings of categorical exemption for SEQA guidelines and purchase and sale agreement between the successor agency to the redevelopment agency for Bitwise Industries. Marlene?
Thank you. This is a great example of maximizing value in the course of the agency's dissolution. The agency issued a request for proposal for its parking lot at 730 Van S. Bitwise responded with an agreement to pay the appraised value of $180,000, and the sale of the parking lot to Bitwise will enable them to expand their business in the adjacent long vacant building at 700 Van S, creating what is projected to be over 200 jobs. So we think this is, again, a great example of maximizing value while we sell off agency properties, and we're recommending your approval of the attached purchase and sale agreement. Thanks.
Thank you, Marlene. I will now take this item out to the public. Okay. Just state your name for the record.
God knows I'm proud to see you all, you up here, Mr. Baines, and I can look at you because you in my district and District Three, and I've seen nothing coming up, so I'm glad to know that you working for Mayor Ashley and the capital improvement projects and the accessory agency and redevelopment. I'm glad to know that you was president. So all this is on record. God put everything up here for a reason. He sent me down here for a reason. I could have still been at home, but he wanted to see that this government is dysfunctional, is illegal, and it's against the law. And this is something, you go get that budget book, look on the back of that budget book, that's why it's capital improvement projects, we're not capitalists. That's why these fire departments can't get no money now, and you, and the police department, no departments, because of my taxes, we're paying the pension money for the fire department, and we paying the pension money for the police department, and we're paying the pensions for all of these employees around here. And I got the papers, and you guys know it because you votes on them. I got the papers in my car. If I had enough room, I bring them in here to you. You guys not fair. Sal, you know it. All you got, Mr., I'm supposed to be looking at you, Mr. President. I can't look at you when you over there because I can't look at nobody else but you when I talk. Sal knows this, he been here a long time. All you guys should know this, you guys signed those papers, you know the fire department got money, they ain't supposed to have no pension money up here, it's already paid by the voters. That's right. So why the hell is they up here now and paying their money and their back money like to do everything else? And all y'all know it. Brandon knows it because he was on the planning commission, 12, 13 years, Mr. Capriol was on the planning commission all 10, 11 years. Y'all all knows this. You playing games with these people. Why don't y'all stop? Because these people going to be smarter one day and wake up and listen to me, Barbara Hunt, and see that all this money, everything that y'all doing is illegal, and you know what goes on, and you couldn't get your $100,000 for your little swimming pool for the kids. He couldn't get $1,000 for his, $100,000 for his little project because you do work for these people in here, the administration, and then when you wrong something, you can't get nothing. So I want this on record. I'm doing all this for a reason. Thank you very much. Mr. President, it's your job to listen to me. How the hell I'm going to listen to you when you not even up here?
Any other public comment? All right, seeing no further comment, I'll bring this back to the dais and entertain a motion. All right, have a motion? We have a second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes four-oh with Members Brandow, Olivier, and Brand absent. And our next item, oh, we will need to approve the minutes for the successor agency of June 19th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? I have a motion? I have a second? Those will be what? Okay. All right, we'll lay those over until the next meeting. So that will adjourn the meeting of the successor agency of the city of Fresno. We will now come back to our regular hearing. The next item we have is the 10:20 a.m. hearing to consider text amendment application number TA-14-002 and related environmental findings regarding urban growth management development restrictions on the running distance between commercial and industrial developments and operating a city fire station staff.
Name's Tim Henry, Deputy Chief, Fire Marshal, Fresno City Fire. We're, before you today is an amendment application on a fire UGM ordinance. This was initiated out of a proposed development in southwest Fresno. It went through the BFF process, which brought up concerns from the development team, and in reaction to that, the Development Resource Manager Director initiated some text change. The text change is a citywide text change, so the application applies in all districts. Currently, our UGM ordinance provides for commercial development up to three miles in what's termed as a running distance. So physical driving distance from a fire station is three miles boundary for commercial development. This proposal and text change allows the ordinance to be waived beyond the three miles if it's equivalent to a running time of four minutes. This, and the purpose of this is somewhat like the letter of the law versus the intent of the law. At the time that the three-mile boundary was set, there was no... At the time that the three-mile, uh, boundary was set, there was no, not enough technology to actually determine a four-minute response time. So if you take three minutes, the average is a four-minute response time, three miles, four-minute response time. So keeping that in mind, the intent of developing this running distance was for, uh, the fire apparatus to be on scene within a certain period of time, uh, so they can, you know, continue to have a, uh, the opportunity to do effective firefighting. In the background, um, what, what this allows, allows the developers to do is maximize the use of existing fire stations instead of building a fire station that may not, uh, be warranted, uh, as of yet. This goes, this, this response time may be a better measurement in some cases, uh, in certain development areas, and I'll demonstrate that in a minute. Again, this goes back the intent of, of why, why we have the three-mile establishment. If you look at the UGM map before you, it is actually calling out the UGM areas, the fire UGM areas, um, as currently in the ordinance, which this language will not impact or change. The second map that's before you is, um, let me define, the, the red line you're looking at is actually the sphere of influence for the city. The blue line is actually, on the perimeter that's dotted, is actually the three, three-mile response from the fire stations that you see on the map. Just pointing out, the red fire stations are City of Fresno, the green are City of Clovis, and then a north central fire district out to the left southwest. The red being the sphere of influence and the area that we're, we're looking at for development. The shaded area of the map is actual response time. So you can see that from those same fire stations, um, due to traffic patterns or streets, um, there's, there leave some white gap areas. So if you see the white gap between the blue dotted line and the, and the shaded area, what we've done is, in our policy, said, yes, you can build out to that area, that blue dotted line, even though in actuality, because of the way we've developed the, uh, street patterns and traffic patterns, um, we're not able to get there in four minutes, um, but we have a three-mile radius. So the next area is, in defining that three, three mile, what, what this text amendment does not do is does not restrict the three miles. So it, it allows developers to continue to develop out to the three miles regardless of the response time from the fire station. What this text does do is allow a developer that may be within the, the shaded area but outside the three miles. So if you look at the map in the southwest area, there are, there are a few minor areas that extend beyond the blue dotted lines. Um, and those are the areas that we have a developer or had a developer that was looking at developing on, but we did not have the ability to approve it unless they built a fire station to cover it. But the intent of the three-mile law was to, for response time, yet because of the freeway access, it made this piece of property within the four-minute response time, which is what we're concerned about. So that the text, or this text is, the intent is to, to provide for developers an opportunity to utilize the fire station, um, to, to their best abilities. Public participation in, in this process since January, we began a public notice process in the Fresno Bee on April twenty-seventh and again on June thirteenth. The council districts, each one of your districts committees, um, addressed the issue, or, or District Two and Three made no comment on it. District committees, or Four, Five, and Six recommended approval of it. The Airport Land Use, uh, Commission found this amendment being consistent with their land uses, and the Planning Commission on May twenty-first recommended approval of this, this text. Correspondents, on, on June twenty-third, we received a letter from the BIA, um, and I have for the clerk a copy of the letter, just in the event that one of the council members has not seen it yet. The letter recommends some, a suggested rewording in the text. But I wanna point out that staff continues to believe that this, the current wording, along with the city attorney's approval, that this, this wording does meet, uh, the developers' intent of that letter, and it, and it gives them a greater ability to develop and not, it does not restrict them in any way by changing the text. The general, current general plan policy in Objective Twenty-five, uh, states that provided in, uh, that we provide emergency service in an adequate, efficient, and, and cost-effective manner, and that's what this does under that policy, that objective E twenty-five. In the policy, uh, E twenty-five, it, it also says that we utilize procedures and criteria contained within the, you, you, urban growth management policy and ordinance to provide an equitable means through which the provision of the fire service can be addressed throughout the UGM areas, including, uh, the, the planned north and southeast growth areas. And, and this text amendment still addresses, uh, stays within that policy. So in conclusion, um, we're asking council to approve the environmental finding for the environmental assessment TA fourteen dash zero zero-two, as, excuse me, pursuant to the sequa guidelines in, in the said, stated sections. Also adopt ordinance, uh, an ordinance bill approving text amendment application of TA fourteen oh-two, amending the section twelve-four-five oh-eight E of Fresno Municipal Code regarding the urban growth management development restriction on running distances between commercial and industrial developments and an operating city fire station.
All right, then. Do we have any cards?
I don't think so.
Council President, um, I'd like to talk about the letter that was submitted. It can't be considered because it was turned in too late.
Yes. Yeah, the letter is, is not gonna, it didn't make it in time to be part of the record, but we have it in our possession, so. What did you call that, Councilman Quintero? Officially unofficial?
Officially.
Yeah, it's officially unofficial. All right. I'm gonna go out to the public on this item and then come, come back up to council. Couple council members wanna comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this item?
I would, uh, comment on it, on the fear of influence and annexation. Now, there used to be a fire station right there on Cherry Avenue and Jensen. They, they moved it. I believe there used to be one on Church and, um, what's that, Holly or Poppy, one of those street right behind the first street over? Think they moved that. The next one we got is down there in Fresno, the guys used to go down that pole and, and help everybody in that area. But when you guys got that fear of influence, you left, um, Walnut Avenue, North Avenue, all those new, um, developments you got up there, all those commercial buildings, all those apartments that look like a death trap to me, one way in and one way out, which y'all approved. All them apartments, all the way up and down forty-one, all the way down to E O C, them ball, that big old basketball and office buildings, all the way down, uh, the, back down the Fresno Street. You got, and the schools, that big old two-hundred-something-thousand, uh, that thirty-seven-million-dollar school up in there. We got a lot of schools up in there. And I admire this fire department because they goes everywhere. Whether they up there or not, they everywhere. My mother had Hunts Cafe all them years. When somebody got hurt, there's car wrecks anywhere up and down the street. Those fire departments beat the ambulance out, out there. And then when I seen the people, when they be out here working and, and helping folks out, the fire department is always there. So I think that we should never forget the work that the fire department has been done, and I've been saying this for sixty-seven years out here. Now, when they broke the, um, uh, the substations all around here, they might, they don't have no equipment. They might got one or two people. They need more people. They need a new, they need a new fire station out here, a bigger one out here to cover all this development that you guys already planted for the people, and it's nothing gonna be, it's gonna be burned down, million dollars, like I just seen somebody got burned down out there with no help. So the urban, uh, urban growth management, that's also, also the, uh, Fresno city, uh, southwest Fresno GNRA area, Urban Renewal Area, is that name, merger three, merger two area? Uh, that thing has been named so many times for all that district out here. That's why I tell you, Sal's district is connected with ours with all that money, but that's that fierce influence from Edison High School that goes back, 'cause it's really the county of Fresno. So the fire department is the only one that came out there to help anybody, traveled all those miles. I see the lights go down. I don't care what goes on, I can hear him going flying by. And the police, they be coming later. And, and they save a lot of lives. The guys get out, the girls too, get out with their little, um, they used to pick the bodies, the people up, take them onto where, get the information, so when the people do come, they can take them where they wanna go. So I give a rec, a lot of recommendation for our fire department because they know more about this business out here than you guys do. While y'all laying up sleeping, they be out there doing your job, working because they don't have equipment and stuff that you need, and didn't order all them new, uh, trucks and stuff that they need, bit more big tall ladders because you left the fire for what they supposed to get the tools that they need to work with. You guys are not doing y'all job. So I wanna know, when is Fresno gonna get what we need for the fire department because they is always here? And Mr., and I'm gonna look at you at this one, 'cause you back up in, Mr. President, for the City of Fresno, that this is in Baines District, and this, and he should've brought this up years ago because we got too much to lose out there not having a, a fire department that come, but these come. Miss, this Sal, he overlapping our district with all our money and stuff, and they should be out there with all them big old buildings, those big, uh, what you call those big tall buildings out there, um, commercial buildings and all those new apartments, all them babies out there, and them old apartments out there on top of each other. So we got, we need a new fire station. We need more help. Is my line up yet?
Yeah.
Well, they saying green over here.
We let you go a little long that time.
Oh, I figured say it's still green to me, so I'm steady talking. But I want you to know, help 'em out.
Good morning, Council President. My name is Claudia Casares, and council members with Granville Homes, thirteen ninety-six West Herndon, here on behalf of Granville Homes and Darius in support of Fire Chief Donnis and her staff's proposal to allow for alternate measures for the fire response. We definitely encourage and applaud logical efforts to assist in development, and we hope to see this type of, uh, constructive changes to our project reviews for not only the commercial and industrial uses, but also for residential in the near future. And, um, with that, my, our support. Thank you.
Now, ma'am, I, I barely heard you. Is that, are you, are you in favor of the text amendment?
Yes, we're in favor of the text amendment.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Any other members of the public like to address this item? All right. Councilman Capriolio.
Uh, thank you, Council President. It, it seems like, uh, from the grassroots area, uh, to today's hearing, it's unanimous support for this, including the implementation committee for District Four of my district, as well as a planning commission, fire, BIA, even Ms. Hunt. So with that in mind, I make a motion to approve.
All right. And I'll second that. Councilman Jeong. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes five-zero. Now, we are on to General Admin Item Two-D, Actions Pertaining to the International Association of Firefighters, Local Site, excuse me, am I? Yeah. Actions Pertaining to International Association of Firefighters, Local Seven-Five-Three, Unit Five, Non-Management Fire Basic, the Personnel Department. We're gonna see if they're here first. That would be a good start. We're gonna, we're gonna, is our Personnel Department in the room? Apparently not. This is what they've been doing to us all day. Okay? So.
It's my understanding that we need to definitely.
Well, they should've. Well, they need to convey that. Somebody over there needs to talk to council. I gotta call it as I see it. I mean, I know what my mic's hot. I'm, I'm glad my mic's hot. I was purposely saying those things when my mic is hot. We're gonna have one final little opportunity for the rest of the city to get over here in time, and that's the ten-thirty item. So we're going to move the ten-thirty item to right now. And that is the hearing to consider, to consider a text amendment application and related environmental finding to establish zoning regulations for payday lenders in the City of Fresno. And that's from our Development and Resource Management Department, and they are here.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. I'm Sophia Pagalatas with the Development and Resource Management Department, and if we could have our PowerPoint up on the screen. Thank you very much. Uh, as Council President just mentioned, we are here this morning to discuss text amendment fourteen oh-two for, uh, payday lenders in the City of Fresno. This text amendment was initiated by this body, the City Council, on November twenty-first of last year by resolution. The text amendment would have citywide application, and it defines payday lenders and establishes zoning regulations for new payday lenders. You do have a legal definition of what a payday lender is in your staff report, but in plain English, payday lenders offer about two weeks of credit, due in full on the borrower's next payday, at an annual interest rate of approximately four hundred percent. Currently, there are sixty-six payday lenders in the City of Fresno, and the map there shows you approximately where they're located. I do wanna mention, though, this text amendment does not affect existing payday lenders, with a small caveat that I'll, that I'll get to in a moment. It is mostly focused on, on new payday lenders that aren't here today and that would, uh, come to the City of Fresno after this text amendment is adopted, if it is adopted. Currently, payday lenders, um, are treated as banks or financial institutions, and they are by right uses in the commercial districts in the City of Fresno. So they don't require a conditional use permit currently. Under the text amendment as drafted, the, um, the most significant requirements would fall on any new payday lenders that would like to locate in the City of Fresno. Specifically, any new payday lenders would be required to obtain a conditional use permit and would be allowed only in the CC or Civic Center, C-four or Central Trading, or C-six, heavy commercial zone districts. So those zone districts, the CC and the C-four are downtown, and the C-six is our major commercial corridor district, so that includes the whole Blackstone Forty-One Corridor, Kings Canyon, Belmont, Olive, uh, along Ninety-Nine and Places, Shaw Ninety-Nine, et cetera. So they'd require a conditional use permit, would only be allowed to locate in these zone districts, um, would be required to be spaced a quarter of a mile from any existing payday lender. That's the one thousand three hundred and twenty-foot spacing requirement. And if they were to cease to operate for ninety days or more, they would lose their rights, and they'd have to go back to square one and reapply for their conditional use permit. So that's the, um, uh, the portion of the text amendment that would apply to new establishments. The way that text amendment is currently drafted for existing establishments, it calls for, existing establishments can stay where they are even if they're not in the specified zone districts. They don't need to come in and get any kind of a planning permit if they don't change. However, the way the text amendment is currently drafted, if they were to expand in any way, they would require a CUP amendment. Again, that's how the text amendment is currently drafted, and, um, they would have a termination of rights clause as well if they stop operating for more than ninety days, back to square one, have to get a CUP. So some statistics about our local economy are, are helpful in understanding, um, the motivations for this text amendment. First of all, consumers of payday lenders, um, end up in a lengthy cycle First of all, consumers of payday lenders end up in a lengthy cycle of debt that is damaging to the local economy. That's the basic premise of this text amendment. Up to seventy-three percent of payday lender customers are repeat borrowers, and their average payback time is five months, even though the system is set up for them to pay back on next paycheck. It usually sends them in, in a spiral that's five months long. What happens is consumer dollars are then being used to pay off debt rather than supporting our local economy. That's the crux of the argument. In addition, payday lending profits flow to out-of-state corporations in most cases, and that's true for ninety percent of payday lenders in Fresno. And finally, a March twenty thirteen study prepared by the Insight Center for Community and Economic Development showed a net economic loss to Fresno of three point six million dollars a year for payday lenders. Now that's not to the city of Fresno as an entity, that's to our local economy, and that was calculated by looking at that consumer spending power that's going off to pay debt instead of supporting the local economy. So what, what are other jurisdictions doing? Well, over a hundred jurisdictions across the United States have enacted some type of zoning regulation on payday lenders, and twelve have even gone so far as to enact moratoria. This text amendment did get a full vetting, public notice and participation. It was published in the Bee According to Our Requirements twice. All of the, the active district implementation committees recommended approval of this text amendment. The Airport Land Use Commission found it consistent with their plans. Meetings were held with the payday lending industry April through June of this year, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval on May twenty first of this year. You will see there's quite a bit of correspondence in your packet, both in support and in opposition to this text amendment, and I'm just going to summarize the concerns of the industry. There are basically three. One is that the zone districts that they can locate in are too restrictive, not enough option there. I would just assert that the overall acreage of those three zone districts is about two thousand six hundred acres citywide, and they include all kinds of options for, you know, commercial buildings that they might go into. So staff feels that the zone district allocation is adequate. The second concern was about the expansions for existing payday lenders, and the concern that if an existing payday lender wants to expand, they have to get an amended conditional use permit. And I will just add that that's standard, standard practice in zoning. And then finally, the third concern was about distance, the quarter mile spacing requirement. And this was something that was included in the text amendment after researching all those hundred other jurisdictions, what did they do? Some of them had one mile spacing, half a mile spacing. We felt that a quarter mile spacing was reasonable, we just don't want them to be over-concentrated, so we landed on quarter mile spacing, and we still stand by that. So in conclusion, we found this text amendment to be consistent with a couple of general plan policies, both related to the economic and fiscal health of our community and our residents. Goal one is our quality of life goal for the general plan. It says, "Enhance the quality of life for the citizens of Fresno in a manner which will respect the fiscal, economic, and social issues." And this is one where we, we believe that the, the economic health of the city is, is affected by all this consumer debt service being paid out instead of being invested in our economy. And then Goal thirteen is to plan for a healthy business climate, and again, this just echoes that, trying to make our economy healthier. So with that, brings us to our final recommendation, which is to approve the environmental finding of a no possibility that this text amendment could have a negative or significant impact on the environment, and to adopt the ordinance bill. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, staff, for that report. I'm gonna exercise a prerogative really quickly to make a, a change to the, to the, to the staff report. City Attorney, I'd like to strike certain language here, just for continuity of what we brought to council initially and what we're going to adopt today. There's a paragraph in it that says likewise, "If payday lending establishments ask capacity for a land area or extends hours of operation, such changes shall resort to termination unless, unless authorized by a new or amended conditional use permit." May I strike that language out, please?
Um, yes, you can make a different revisions or add...
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to amend the, amend the resolution without, to strike that language out, please.
And that's subject to, of course, a motion.
Yeah, and I'm making the motion. I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve this item with the language change.
Watch of the public?
Yeah. Yes, I am. And that, and, yeah, I'll come down. And, and, go ahead, Sal.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, what, what part of, what page is that on that you want to change?
I'll find it for you while we're taking public comment and tell you.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't, I don't have it off the top of my head. I know where, I know where it is in my report, but I'll, I'll show it to you.
Okay. Yeah, I just want, I didn't hear it clearly, what you were stating, so that's why I wanted to read it.
No.
Yeah.
And now I'll take this item out to the public and receive public comment.
All right, Councilman Brand.
I want to thank Councilmember Baines and staff for working with the industry to address some of the concerns, and I think that these are reasonable items on the CUP. Councilmember Baines, again, pursuant to our conversation, then, the items we talked about were adjusted, okay? Okay, again, I want to thank, again, Mr. Baines, and I will support this item today. Thank you.
It was my turn to talk, Mr. President, because he called for public comment. It was my turn.
Well, forgive me, Barbara, you're up now.
I'm glad that you backed her. Now, this is what I'm talking about. It's a lot of people don't have money, they got emergencies in their family, and the pay raises is too low, and they need to go borrow money for a few days, which is absolutely, absolutely correct if they can do it, because it's still freedom of speech, freedom of rights. We can do what we want to do with our money. We don't have to direct our money downtown to the Assembly Brothers Corporation. You got addressed why he gonna come up and make these arguments when he own the whole downtown? And all the works being done is downtown. All the roads, all the pipes, everything is downtown. I don't see no diversity of people, I don't see no black folks out there, Mexicans amongst them, nobody doing that work and coming downtown. The one up there, they trying to run out of there. You guys should have that bond book, I had it, that old guy Jack O'Connor's guy up there, the school guy in Sacramento, because I wanted to know when I was on West Fresno School Board, why's a hundred percent of our money going to him? All that money going? How they gonna come up here and dictate that they want our money to go, not, to go out of state, when, when you guys approved two hundred and eighty million dollars to go to that hospital out there, St. Agnes, and that's to a guy that's out there in Virginia? Two hundred and eighty million dollars? And then gonna tell us what we can do with forty dollars to pay for a fifty to a hundred dollar loan, or two hundred dollar loan with emergency? We don't have the money like the elite folks out here, Lumenatis, everybody else around here. Y'all don't even have the money. That's why, Mr. Baines, I'm here and live in one of his apartments, and this would be a conflict event for him to vote on anything if he live in one of them apartments over there, they're telling me. Because this is his downtown area, and everything that's been coming up from his district is automatically approved whether he goes to follow the procedure or not. He knows he called for unscheduled communica, I mean, for people that wanted to talk first before you came out, then Mr. Brand. He probably was on that planning commission when they planned us in this mess out in the first place, when Cynthia Sterling was up here. It's not fair. The people is still got the power of the United States of America. It's we the people, it's not a handful of board members that don't know who you guys go to, redevelopment of everybody else, Joint Fire Fighters Authority. You still work for us. We pay your check. Your kids, you might need to go out there and borrow two hundred dollars in the middle of the night or during the daytime, and they won't want to spend no money downtown for them. How you gonna spend something downtown or anywhere, especially Manchester, when all of our business from downtown went to Manchester, and all they putting up is lost houses? What about them beautiful stories? We had Galk, Chuck, Zookers, Walter Smith, all them people that looking dressed like kings and queens running around here, they tore them up. Tore up everything downtown. It's against the law. Somebody need to investigate, was all that money that supposed to be for downtown Fresno, where is it? All that CBG, home financing, everything that was supposed to be in there? Why, where did that money go? The city of Fresno spent it. I'm gonna tell you where it went. That's the only way it can go, because those tax increments that supposed to went downtown, they bought them. Handed by five motor developers. You guys fought, and they know it. Y'all know it. You guys just going along with their program, that to me, that's a conspiracy, and my light is red, because I'm watching it, I'm listening to the thing, but I want you to know some of this history, and there he sitting right here.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to address this item?
I still want to look up and try it. Great afternoon, council. My name is Christopher Garcia. I'm an associate minister at Saint Matthews Baptist Church on the west side of Fresno. It's good to see that there are starting to be implementations to correct those who are now trying to come in and establish a loan shark, excuse me, not loan shark, but um, money lending. Yes, money lending. We already have sixty-six licensed establishments. That is more than enough to lend money to this county, this city. The crux of the argument was, as it was stated, is that people aren't spending money in the local economy. Well, well, I would like to add on to that what was also stated briefly, is that the poverty and the, that, that is the essential part. Again, it's continuing a chain of poverty. Most people are not able to have a bank account to do their banking that way. They have to charge, they have to buy a card, and some of these places offer that service. Sixty-six of these licensed establishments offered that service. Spending in local economy, that goes with, that goes without saying. It's that, the, the, not the crux, but the crutch that we are put on as a community is that we have sharks taking advantage of those, those who are misfortunate, those that were not brought up to think in terms of, I need a bank account in order to function as a member of this county. Those are a lot of lack of information, a lot of lack of education when it's dealing with things of bank lending, money lending. We, we, we really need to get into the communities and educate them. Now, there are, again, sixty-six, very close, and a quarter mile, that, that's just not, that's not, that's not gonna cut it. A quarter mile, that's a three-minute drive. A ten-to-fifty-minute walk, that just won't do. Thank you for your time.
God didn't tell us that. We're in America. We what we want to do.
Good morning. I'm Reverend Natalie Chamberlain. I'm here, address thirteen forty-nine East Indianapolis. I am here today, first of all, to thank you as members of this council for considering this measure. I'm, I'm also here to encourage you to actually pass it. I know that it has been a long time coming. This ordinance is, comes to us dealing with the issue of usury, and it has a scriptural and ethical and moral founding. It's firmly grounded in the moral and ethical values that are first laid out in the Hebrew Bible, as early as the formation of the nation of Israel under Moses. The principle of not lending with exorbitant interest to one's countrymen was established. If you lend money to my people, to the poor among you, you shall not deal with them as creditors, you shall not exact interest from them. That's according to Exodus, the twenty-second chapter. Jesus continues this teaching and calls his followers to adhere to the high standard he sets. If you lend to those from whom you hope to receive, what credit is that to you? Even as sinners lend to people to receive as much again. But love your enemies, do good, and lend expecting nothing in return. Your reward will be great, and you will be children of the Most High, for he is kind to the ungrateful and the wicked. That comes from Luke the Sixth Chapter. In this country, capitalism is the accepted norm, but we, as people of faith, can expect that if interest is charged, it will not be exorbitant or debilitating. Please, don't let more payday lenders get rich on the backs of those in our society who can least afford it.
Amen.
Pastor Christopher Breedlove, I reside at sixty-five fifty-three North Orchard, and in Mr. Paul Capriolo's district. My church is in your district, too. I want to speak in favor of passing this ordinance, and in hopes that you do pass this ordinance, I want just to say a couple of things. Proverbs, chapter twenty-two, verse seven, Mr. Olivier, says that the borrower is servant to the lender. Also, too, in hopes that you pass this ordinance, I want to say that communities of faith, through faith and community, and many other grassroots organizations, and the hard work of people working for the city to get this ordinance ready, applaud the courage and compassion of city council members to stem the tide of modern-day usury that preys on the hardship of the working poor. Council, please pass this ordinance. Thank you.
I want to thank President Brandow and the rest of the board for letting me be here. I'm Mike Alexander, the president and CEO of the United Way of Fresno County. Our office is on Kings Canyon Road in Willow. I want to thank and congratulate Councilmember Baines for those, and those who are supportive of this ordinance. In the three years I have been held this position, I have noticed a lot of growth in payday lending. You've heard the numbers, sixty-six now. In fact, there are now four payday lenders within two blocks of our office. This is a particular concern to us, because, as you know, at the United Way of Fresno County, one of our primary focuses is income. Through our Spark Point Center, we offer people of Fresno County resources to programs, second chance bank accounts, financial education, which includes explaining the true cost of payday lenders. As this ordinance has been considered, you've heard the statistics. According to Credit Karma, the average interest rate on a payday loan in California is four hundred and sixty percent, and some going up to five thousand percent. And unfortunately, we know that people who utilize these services are Fresno County's most vulnerable citizens. More than two-thirds are users are at the thirty thousand dollar level, and some are at forty percent, or at less than twenty thousand dollars a year in their income. So forty thousand, and thirty, and twenty. The sad fact, though, is the cycle of debt that is created as borrowers continue to take on additional payday loans just to pay their original loan. The average borrower ends up paying seven hundred and ninety-three dollars to pay off a three hundred and twenty-five dollar loan. That's over five hundred dollars in fees that they could have used for their family for essentials that they need to live on a daily basis. So in conclusion, is with these reasons that we support this and express our hope that you will pass this, and again, we thank Oliver Baines for moving this ahead. Thank you.
I had not, I had not presented my card earlier.
That's okay.
Okay. My name is Priscilla Still, and I live in the Lowell community, and I just want to say that I would like to thank you for putting on or considering this ordinance. I was one of those individuals that had gotten trapped by the payday loans. It has to do with a mindset. It has to do with a mindset of, should I continue doing this, or should I get out of this? And I am thankful that I'm no longer using payday loans, because it became very expensive. Every time I kept going back, it was like, okay, sign me up again, and then it was like, then I had this great big chunk of debt, thinking about how to get rid of it. So I don't have any scriptures or anything like that for you, but I am a woman of faith, and I don't believe in usury and, and depending upon the backs of, of others, and that, and that basically, basically, that's it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
(applause)
Good morning, Council. It is still morning. I'm Reverend Sophia DeWitt, Interim Director at Fresno Interdenominational Refugee Ministries, and active participant with the community group Faith in Community. And I am here to strongly support the passage of this ordinance. The regulations proposed here are reasonable. There are plenty of existing establishments in the city. No one should be concerned that if they wanted to use these establishments, they would not be available. But we need to draw a line and stop the proliferation of these establishments so that more money can circulate in our, in our local economy, and people can begin to build financial futures for themselves that are secure. And, and this is a step in that right direction. I want to thank the council for taking time to consider this. I want to especially thank Councilman Baines for his work on this issue over many months. And I urge you to vote to pass this ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you.
Dee Barnes, thirty-seven thirty Kenmore Drive North. I, too, want to thank you, Councilman Baines. Personally, I just wish it would go further. I would rather see a complete moratorium. Like one of the gentlemen said, I'm sorry, I do believe it can, is legalized loan sharking. So, but I do thank you for the work that's been done, and I urge all of you to vote for this. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, Council President and Councilmembers. I thank you for your time today. My name is Sophia Garcia, Director of Government Affairs for Advance America. Advance America is a founding member of California Consumer Finance Association, an association whose members are committed to providing access to a range of affordable, state-regulated, small-dollar credit services, so consumers and small businesses can choose the product that suits their own individual financial needs. Over the past year, a number of our member companies have met with many of you to discuss our concerns regarding the proposed payday lending ordinance before you. In the past couple of months, we have met on numerous occasions with Councilmember Baines and his staff to try to address the new items that were added to the ordinance since the resolution last November, and come to a compromise. Although a payday lending ordinance is never something our industry fully supports, as it places limitations on access to credit to consumers, we believe the ordinance before you today is fair. We appreciate Councilman Baines's willingness to strike the need for an existing payday lending establishment to require a conditional use permit should the business wish to extend hours of operation or add capacity. The bottom line is that payday loans are a much-needed license and state-regulated product. Without these non-traditional financial products, many Fresno residents would not be able to access cash when they need it the most, or worse, be forced to turn to illegal, unregulated, unlicensed, online payday lenders. Once again, we thank Councilman Baines for his willingness to work with the industry and hear our concerns. Thank you.
Good morning to each of you. My name is DJ Kryner. I reside at sixty-one seventy-five West San Jose Avenue, but the majority of my time is spent at St. Res Baptist Church in West Fresno, on Reverend Chester Riggins Avenue. And I wasn't going to stand to say anything, but I think it's only right that as a, a person who spends the majority of his time in, in my councilman, who I'm going to say, Councilman Baines's district, I want to say thank you. Thank you for standing up and being the leader that we have so pushed for, for that district. The reason why I haven't pulled this podium up is because this is how many of our congregants and community members walk into our church, asking for benevolence, which in our religious faith, our Christian faith, is help in order to pay back certain debts that they owe. And the majority of the individuals that come in, come in as a result of payday lenders, and how they are hunched over with the debt of being treated unfairly due to the fact of how much they do not have in their bank accounts, and how many children they have in their homes. And just because individuals are blessed to be able to have a father and a mother making a certain amount of money, over seventy, eighty thousand dollars, does not mean every single individual can do the exact same thing. And it is unfair to have individuals profit off of those who do not have, just so that they can have a little bit more in their pockets. And so to Councilman Baines and to each and every one of you, I ask that you would please vote yes on this. I ask that you would continue to think about the residents of Fresno that may not be able to make it to River Park, to the movie theaters, but maybe can only make it to Salam Seafood on the West Fresno area, just to be able to sit down and have something to eat. So again, I thank you, and I pray that your vote is an honest vote. Thank you.
I'm gonna just, really quick, Council President, right before you speak, Marina. I just want to, just remind the people that are here to speak on behalf or against the issue that the council is eagerly awaiting to vote the issue. I think that, and I wanted to say, and kind of, unless you have something different to add that we haven't heard, it would probably be in the interest to let us get back here and really debate it, because I think you may want to hear some of our comments, so.
And I think, I think you're also suggesting they're probably going to like the outcome of the vote. But you can't promise that.
Well, if the votes are there, I can, I can do that.
Thank you, Marina.
All right.
All right. Right? Trust, trust.
Good morning, Councilmembers. I'll be really brief. My name is Vanessa Lugo, and I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Check and A Cash. We have always worked with local government officials and legislators to create laws and regulations that allow this regulated credit option to best serve the needs of California residents. With that, I would like to thank Councilmember Baines and his staff for the opportunity to sit down with us the past few months to hear our concerns. While we couldn't address all of our issues, we believe we reached a fair and reasonable agreement. There is significant consumer demand for state-regulated small-dollar, short-term credit, and that's why so many consumers turn to our product after weighing all other options. Again, I would like to thank Councilmember Baines for working with our industry. Thank you.
Councilman Quintero, you had punched in? All right. We have a motion, and who seconded it? I can't remember if that's been seconded. Second, the screen is clear, all in favor. Aye. All opposed. Motion passes seven-zero. Thank you. All right. We've had a really goofy day, back-to-back weeks, actually, that- Hold on a second. So, here's what's going to happen, and I know we've got a lot of our firefighters in the room, and you guys want to talk. You're going to get a chance. However, it's going to be after lunch, and after, but, well, wait a second. Need to take- Well, actually, it's got to do with your leadership, and this administration on the other half of the building are over there working feverishly, okay? So, you guys submitted a last-minute letter to council today, and because you guys submitted that letter, there's been a lot of last-minute conversations. I'm being very honest. So with that, before lunch, I'd like to ask Pete Flores to come up and talk about this letter. Then we're going to go into lunch, into closed session, then we're going to come back out, and every voice is going to get to be heard. And so Pete, are you here? Yep, there we go.
Good morning. Good morning, Council President. City Council?
To the mic? No. There you go.
Good morning, Council President. City Council? The last few days have been pretty intense. I've been in significant conversations with the city manager and talking with my leadership. I think we've come to a possible solution, so I apologize for the late submittal of the letter. I think it's been finalized. I saw the city attorney floating around, talking to our attorney, and if there's any other stuff that needs to be talked about, if you have any questions for me about the letter, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Cool. Pete, can you kind of briefly mention the highlights of the letter and the, kind of the changes that you're requesting?
Sure. What we're looking at is, we talked about the June TA that the membership did not ratify, and then some additional things. The items that we talked about was putting a seventy-thirty cap on our health care. So to recap that item, it's a seventy-five-twenty-five, fifty-fifty split on the increases, and then putting a seventy-thirty cap on the health care, so it never goes beyond that. It will always be a seventy-thirty split until it's negotiated otherwise. The second item has to do with the uniform allowance. At the end of the contract, it'll be a, till January of seventeen, the uniform allowance will be increased to a hundred dollars. It will go from eleven-hundred to twelve-hundred. The third item has to do with deferred compensation. At the end of the contract, in January of seventeen, it will go to a hundred dollars a month. And then some additional language that I'll read verbatim. We talked about language suggesting a sunset to the nine percent paid by current employees, and also a sunset for the new employees paying twelve percent into their pension. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at adding six months to it, which will take it to January of seventeen. Again, as I mentioned earlier, the June TA, along with all the side letters, that and a packet, will be taken to our membership, and we will be calling for a vote. I need to talk with my leadership to see when the soonest date is available. I think it will be around the first or second week of July, no later than the ninth. Is that correct, Dean? Monday, Wednesday, so we'll be voting on this the seventh and the ninth of July.
Seventh through the ninth of July?
Seventh and the ninth.
Seventh and the ninth.
Yeah.
Pete, I know you probably haven't had a chance to completely survey your members, but do you have any idea? I mean, this is very important. It's kind of a complete change of what was moving forward in our afternoon. Now we have to really talk about this in closed session, so it'd be very helpful to us if you had any sense of these changes and this new, latest proposal with your membership.
I just presented it to them this morning. I'm going with what the bargaining unit is recommending, and we think there's enough change here to take it to our body. The primary incentive being the health care issue. We work in one of the most dangerous professions in the world, and that is near and dear to us. We're exposed to this stuff day in, day out, forty thousand times a year. We are one of the most active departments in the nation, and that's significant. The health care was one of the things that we were looking for. So I don't have a general feel for the body after we leave here. I was hoping to get it done before lunch, but I understand there's rules to follow. But I will be taking the membership back to the Union Hall and talking to them about what's at stake here.
Okay, fantastic. Well, we appreciate everything, and we felt it was necessary to bring you up before lunch and make sure that our side kind of gets to hear your presentation of the letter, your version of that, and then also your membership kind of get to hear if some of the guys haven't heard about it yet, and that they can kind of talk to you about it, or others through lunch. In the afternoon, guys, everybody will get a chance to talk, and you can say yea or nay if you agree with what your leadership team has put together. That would be helpful to us to understand where you guys are at on that. And so, all right. I'm gonna, other council members, this is really only for Pete, so go ahead, Councilman Capriolo.
Actually, I was hoping that we could get a non-binding informal poll of the firefighters that are in the room today that would seem to support this particular item. Can you guys raise your hands if you think you can support this?
I think the discussion should be limited.
Okay, Marina, Marina, we got it. We got it. I understand, that's a good point, Marina, city attorney.
I would limit the discussion to Mr. Flores for now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marina. Paul, do you wish to continue with your poll, or do you want to stop there?
I think you've done a good job with your presentation, and really appreciate the hard work that you and your team have put into this entire process. It's been long and arduous, so thank you very much, Pete.
Thank you.
And the balance of your team.
I will take a poll over at the Union Hall and go from there.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Pete. And for all of you firefighters, I want you to understand this is not what, the way this was going to move today, but you guys have, you guys have sent each council member a letter, and we've got to review that letter. Matter of fact, it's really difficult for us to review something this complex and intense in just a matter of hours while we're holding a meeting. So you've seen some of our team leave the room because they wanted to interact and hear what's being presented. We're gonna, we're not going to have a fun lunch. We're going to have a lunch where we're going to be hearing stuff and trying to digest food, but also material. And then we're going to go into closed session. When we come out, we're going to start closed session at one-thirty. We'll probably be out somewhere around two-thirty. Every, every voice will be heard, and, and we need to hear from you because it's really important to us. So thank you, Pete. Thank you for your team. Thank you for our firefighter showing up today and being patient.
Thank you.
City Attorney, and we just had our city manager walk in. Now we're just one official short, and he's drafting, he's drafting a memo that he has to get correct, so just bear with us a little bit. And we're going to report out of closed session and continue with our afternoon, so be just a minute. All right. Hey, everybody. Honestly, sorry that the day took so long. Absolutely, I can guarantee you that when the council came to work this morning and the staff, we had no idea what was going to be presented to us today, so in, in all reality, it's a lot of lawyer's talk behind the scenes. So we're sorry about the way that that happened and that you guys spent half your day down here at City Hall. We just came out of closed session where we had some real solid and tough, interesting conversations, and I'm going to let Councilman Baines kind of report out of closed session for us today.
Thank you, Council President. So what I'd like to do is make a motion, if I could, can you guys hear me?
No, is your mic on?
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. What I'd like to do is make a motion regarding this item for the proposal submitted to us today by the Fire, Fire Association. Is my mic off?
Yes.
How about that? Okay. I got a mic problem, I have a mic problem up here. So the association made a proposal today, which adopted the terms set forth in the city's May twentieth, two thousand fourteen proposal with six modifications. The association has also said that they will take this proposal back to their membership with the strongest recommendation possible. I want to make a motion to approve, I want to approve a resolution accepting the terms of the association's June twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen proposal, which adopted the terms set forth in the city's May twentieth, May twentieth, two thousand fourteen proposal with the six modifications. Association membership is encouraged to ratify the association's June twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen offer. If the association fails to ratify the association's offer, the city shall have a hearing on July tenth, eight-thirty a.m., to consider implementation of the city's last best offer. That's my motion, Council President.
I'll second that motion, Councilman Baines. All right, then. Pete, Pete, we'd love to bring you to the front here. Pete, Pete, we'd love to bring you to the front here. You were like the last person we heard from before we went into closed session, and so we're bringing you back out after closed session. And I think it's pretty clear what Councilman Baines's motion was about, and so if, in all reality, we're not gonna take that vote to impose today, but we want to accept your offer with those terms that he mentioned, knowing that if you guys don't ratify that offer, we're gonna have to have this same very difficult type of day on Thursday, the 10th. But we're hoping to avoid that, as most of the people in this room are. So Pete, if you'd like to comment, and then we are going to take public comment, maybe because of this change, maybe not as many people are gonna have to vent as thought they were gonna have to. But you certainly can, if you want to, take your three minutes. So Pete, let's start with you.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to point a clarification on the document that was handed over to Mr. Rudd this morning. This document is a continuous good faith effort to make sure that we try to reach an agreement. This is something that we believe would be acceptable to both sides, that we could bring back to them. This was what we discussed. This is not just a proposal from the local. It is a collective effort from the city and the association to bring to the body. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Awesome.
Our intent is to bring this back to the body on the 7th and the 9th of July, and get a ratification vote and go from there.
So you would know by the end of the business day on the 9th?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we would.
All right.
Also, if I can, touch base on a few other things. We went back to the Union Hall today when, at about 1 o'clock, 12:30, and we had a lot of dialogue with the people standing behind me. We talked about concessions. We talked about $13 million worth of concessions that we made to the city when they asked for it. We continued to talk about that and how it's impacted the families and the members over the last several years. I didn't ask to be a firefighter. That decision was made way before I joined the profession 20 years ago. I truly believe, just like the members behind me, that it is a true calling. I believe that because my instinct is to help others in need when they need it the most, every single time. We don't get the opportunity to ask if they live north or south of Shaw. We don't get the opportunity to ask them in which council district they live in. When that bell rings, we go. We go and we help every single time, 40,000 times a year. So when someone asks for help, whether it's just to reassure them that their child is gonna be okay, whether we do CPR, or whether it's to help balance the budget, we are at the front of the line every single time. We understand that we need to put money in reserves. We also understand that we need to pay off some of our debt. But we also know that we did not get there overnight. For all we know, when Mayor Swearengen took office, we might have been in the red 10, 15, 20 million already. We don't know that out here. So when you try to fix a problem of this size overnight, it doesn't make sense to us to fix it so quickly that you are gonna burden the employees year after year. This will cause permanent damage to the employees, the city and the employee relationship. I truly feel that. This will carry on for years to come, far past when me and you retire. Whether we end up somewhere else, Central Coast, whether we end up at the state capitol, or whether we end up taking on new challenges, the damage will still be there. But as long as the employee and the city are both working together to benefit all the stakeholders, the city, the employee, our fire department, and most importantly, the community, we all win. But not this way. If what we really want is to balance the budget and continue having a working relationship with the employees of the city of Fresno, I think we can come to a solution. So I encourage you to help us find that solution. Thank you. One last thing, President. I think my members need to get something off their chest. I think because of the concessions that we've continued to make, it's just kind of been built up. And I heard that today, and I want them to express themselves, because it's been eating at them for several years. So I don't want you to hear from me. I want them to have the opportunity to share with you what they feel. Thank you.
All right, then, we're gonna kind of go with the flow that we normally do, which we're gonna go out to the public. And then I do have some cards already about this issue, and then we're gonna come back up and let council members make their comments, and then we'll call it a day, because this was the last item on our agenda. So the first card that I have is from Brandon Griffith. Brandon, you can come on up, and if you're Mike McGee, you can come up and stand behind Brandon and be ready to take the microphone. And then George Arthur can be after Mike. And then Barbara, we've got a card from you. You can be after George. And that is all the cards. Oh, hang on a second. Then Lee Sharp, you're also coming up. Justin McDonald, Devin McGuire. And then those are all the ones that turn in cards, but after those cards are done, then anybody else can come up and have their three minutes as well. Yeah, and just announce your name, your address.
My name is Brandon Griffith. I'm a member of the Fresno City Firefighters, Local 753. Before I get started, does the council all understand what an unscheduled holiday is for a firefighter? If you don't, just speak up, it's real easy to address. Everybody understand it? What it is, is firefighters work 24/7/365. We work Christmas, we work Easter, we work all the holidays, if we're on schedule. So the way we're compensated for that is we acquire, we accrue, excuse me, hours that we can use, and that's unscheduled holiday hours. Everybody clear on that? Okay. In the fire service, we're organized in groups called companies. Each company responds from an apparatus known as an engine or a truck. Each apparatus is operated by a trained and qualified engineer. Each company has one to two firefighters that are given a task to complete, and each company is led by a captain. Within the city limits, Fresno currently has 19 companies ready for emergency response. In the fiscal year 2010, within the city limits, Fresno had 25 companies. When it became clear the city was in a fiscal emergency, our city leaders began talking about closing a company. As firefighters, we thought this was a bad idea. Companies save lives, plain and simple. We backed up our convictions by donating 24 hours of accrued unscheduled holiday time on our own. The city gladly took this donation, and about six months later, closed that company that we gave those hours up to save. This donation of holiday time saved the city nearly $200,000. This form of emergency response by your Fresno City firefighters was just one of the ways our concessions have saved this city $13 million. Thank you.
My name is Mike McGee, and I'm a member of Local 753. I'm a Fresno firefighter. As such, my life is dedicated to helping people through emergencies. In 2011, the city remained in fiscal emergency, so my brother and sister firefighters found another way that they could respond to this emergency and help the city save money by breaking up our vacation, our vacation time into smaller increments. We found a way to save the city $245,000 that year alone. We've been doing that, that started in 2011, and we've been doing it ever since. So the total now is $735,000 with that small measure of donation of time from us. This form of emergency response by your Fresno firefighters was just another way that concessions have saved the city $13 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Good afternoon. My name is George Arthur. I live at 7674 North Santa Fe, Fresno, 93722, and I am also a Fresno City firefighter. As such, I work a 56-hour work week, which means I work about 40% more hours than a typical 40-hour employee. Just something to keep in mind when salaries start getting thrown around and we start debating that. When you look at the data from peer cities, the data that the city uses to justify salaries and raises for certain, certain positions, such as the city attorney, city managers, things like that, we are, as a firefighter, compensated at a rate of about 25% less than those same peer cities. And yet, we're still looking at more concessions and more cuts. In 2011, we were told that if we helped the city up and stepped up and gave concessions out of our contracts, it would get through this looming bankruptcy that the city was facing. Said if we needed, if we gave cash, it'd help them get through it. And we did that. We were one of only two bargaining groups to voluntarily come forward and take a 2.5% pay cut in order to do that. And we were thanked, and we were told how much it was appreciated, and yet, year after year, we come back and it's more cuts, more concessions from our paychecks, from our We were told, now, people will be quick to point out that we also, during this time of emergency, took pay raises, and it's true, to the tune of about 4% in salary raises and a 2% pension contribution from the city, we did. The cost of those benefits is about $2.6 million that the city had to pay us in those negotiations. That doesn't even begin to touch $13 million that we've raised out of our division alone to help the city through this time. Even said, all said and done, you're still talking about $10 million that we've saved. Nobody's gonna argue that in times of need, everybody needs to step up. The argument would be that those times aren't still here. We don't still have that fiscal emergency looming over our head, and we need to realize that your workers are not the Band-Aid to fix the city's financial issues. And it's time that we realize that we are negotiated employees, we're not a revenue stream for the city. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good afternoon, electric officials, city manager, distinguished guests. My name is Lee Sharp, and I'm a proud member of the 753 Fresno City Fire Department, but I'm also a father, a combat veteran, and most importantly, a taxpayer and a voter. I'm here today to address, what saddens me the most is I have to come up here today and talk about concessions that we've already given up. We've taken a job that we know that we will sacrifice more than most people will ever do. We are asked to do things that the average person will never see or do. We don't ask for a thank you, nor a slap on the back, but we do it because why? Because of pride, honor, and commitment. I'd like to take a minute, these individuals behind me, if you may stand up. Please, everybody that's a Fresno City Firefighter, stand up. They're the reason why you have a job. They're the reason why you're elected. As I go back and I look at all your campaigns, each and one of you said that you are public safety, and that is the number one key issue to you. Well, here's public safety. I did not forget that, and neither should you. So when you would do these concessions, you're not, we're just not giving it up. Their families are giving it up. I don't understand why food can be taken off of our table, and shoes can be taken off of our kids' feet, and you sit up there and you give raises and elect on other raises for city officials. You'll never find another fire department with the committed members that we have today, that sacrifice, their diligence, and their teamwork is second to none. And I want you to appreciate that today, council members. Look what you have. You're the reason that you get your job. You're the reason that you are able to sit up there today, Mr. Brandow and these council members. Because why? Because they're saving lives and fighting fires in your districts, each and one of you, each and every day, and they're asking for nothing in return. So I challenge you this, to all of you. Do what's right, stand up, be a leader, and no concessions.
Barbara, after you comes Justin, and after Justin comes Devin, after Devin Joshua Sellers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, right now, I'm talking on a different level. I graduated from Edison High School. I got my associate's science degree in human service. I have my master's from California School Board Association. I know what government's in, I know what bargaining unit do. But when I hear that we got all this money that they're taking out of my property taxes for fire department, police department, and all the employees of the city of Fresno, and you guys know it because you voted on them every year, and I can give them a copy, which I'm gonna do, so it's gonna be a big damn lawsuit after I get through with this one. Now, I know that the money that's been accumulated that the city of Fresno owes has nothing to do with these firefighters or their department. This is an obligation of the city of Fresno, and they shouldn't be harmed, hold harm in harm's way in a harness damn nest for debt that they didn't commit. And you know it too. I called Swearengen on the phone and put my mouth on the phone. I wasn't gonna talk today, but I came up here because they said, "Well, we smart up here." No, you're not. You're not smart. So what I'm asking is, when the debt that's been accumulated that would get them out of debt, we don't know what that is, who created that debt, where that money went, or nothing. That is not their business. You guys not doing your job, you shouldn't hold the fire department responsible for anything, like you're paying your rent in a house. You owe them that money, you pay them their money, so they can go on their life, because when they get out here all times of night on that fire truck, out here risking their life, you guys are sleeping, don't know what goes on, too. I hear it on the news. It's not fair to these people. Whatever debt the city of Fresno raised around here, all these many years, I've been standing here, you steady owe money, and you haven't paid them, that is not their obligation, it's the obligation of you all, and on all these taxes of the whole city of Fresno, you guys are taking money out of their checks, out of the people's landowners' checks to pay the fire department pension, the police department pensions, and all the employees' pensions, and I got them in my car right now. And I wanna know, what are you doing with all that money that you're taking from all these people's taxes? What are you doing with all that money that's supposed to be for the pension's money and for the employees' money and for the fire department money right now? It do not say anything about all the money that you guys done paid, got your little monkey projects out here, owe those people all that money. You can't pay your bills, you shouldn't have to take it off to them. I want all that money that's taken off of these people's taxes to go to them, because the voters put that money there, and you guys know it because your signature is on these papers. You can play games with them, but you cannot play games with me, and I'm not playing games this trip around, because I'm sick of this shit. You guys not doing fair. It's not the one way, and that's the right way. And this is not democracy. This has been stupid. So what I'm saying is, and taxes we go to Vicky Crowe right now, and I'll get all them tax papers, and I will bring them to let you see who paying these people's money, and I want that money given to them. And I'm gonna give them, I'm gonna give them copies of these papers, like the police department too.
My name is Justin McDonald. I'm a firefighter with the Fresno Fire Department, and just like my 300 brothers and sisters, I became a firefighter because I wanted to help others. I wanted- I wanted to be a part of something larger than myself and to protect that which is most precious, life. I wanted to work here because of a long and proud tradition of service. The Fresno Fire Department is one of the oldest departments in the United States. Men and women have been giving of themselves to the people of this city since 1877. And if there is one thing we've learned how to do, it's how to help in times of need. When a fire engine shows up, the citizens of Fresno are confident that help has arrived. We bring hope to terror and peace to chaos. So when the city needed our help because of a fiscal emergency, we responded. Our firefighters responded by voluntarily taking 276 hours of leave without pay, commonly referred to as furloughs. This action saved the city $2.2 million over three years. This form of fiscal emergency response by your Fresno firefighters was just one of the ways our concessions saved the city over $13 million. Please remember all we have given. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Devin McGuire, fire captain, Fresno Fire, Local 753, and also a city resident. As Pete mentioned earlier, and you're hearing us all vent, we do have some frustrations with what's transpired over the last five years, but more importantly, what's happened over the last year. And this is one of the reasons our members are a little frustrated with what's been going on. Five years ago, Local 753 demonstrated good faith and voluntarily helped the city in its time of need, just as Justin mentioned, and accepted furloughs. We were told that our assistance would not be forgotten. Fast forward to this last year, we began negotiations and the process started with the city assuming approximate 4% in employee concessions. The city then went out and hired a high-powered Bay Area attorney who cost the city approximately $1 million, whose sole job was to get concessions from all labor groups. We continue to hear how the city has negotiated in good faith, but actions speak louder than words. We continually heard over and over again about a revenue problem and a city teetering on bankruptcy, but for the past few years, the city has brought in more money than was budgeted. In fiscal year 2012, the city brought in $1.2 million over the projected rate. In May of last year, we were told if Measure G failed, then the city would likely not be able to make payroll and public safety would suffer. Measure G did fail, the city did make payroll, and there were no further reductions to public safety. How do you negotiate in good faith when you keep finding money you're telling everyone you don't have? Last week, the council approved a budget that included nearly $2 million in additional spending. Nearly all of that money goes to council-specific projects. How do you negotiate in good faith when you already spent the money you're planning on taking from us? The negotiations process is governed by the Myers-Brown Act, which outlines a process that is to be followed by both parties. This process has very specific guidelines that are to be followed if both parties have reached impasse. Recently, the same Public Employee Relations, correction, recently, the State Public Employment Relations Board ruled that the city did not follow these guidelines in fiscal years 2011 and 2012 by illegally furloughing members of Local 39. Now, the city has to pay back nearly half a million dollars in back pay and interest. How do you negotiate in good faith when the city has demonstrated that they have no intentions of doing so? You see, we know a little something about good faith. We go into burning buildings with the good faith that our engineer will get us water, that our backup team will get us out of the, if a ceiling collapses, and that truck company will get on the roof and make a path for smoke and fire to escape. We take an oath in the good faith that our city will give us proper training, equipment, and support to care for the city's broken, burned, and bleeding. Now, it's time for these city leaders to start operating in true good faith. Thank you.
My name is Joshua Sellers. I'm a firefighter for the city of Fresno, and I was assigned to one of those six companies that was closed in 2009. When we closed those six companies, we had 70 to 80 extra firefighters but had no extra rigs or trucks or engines for them to ride on. What do you do with those 70 to 80 firefighters who don't have a rig to ride on? Let me tell you what we did. We use people like me to fill in vacancies created by injuries, sickness, and those on vacation. I'd show up to work at the nearest firehouse and wait for a chief to tell me where to go next. Sometimes, I'd get that call four or more times a day, which means I would have to pack my bags, gather my safety gear, and drive to the next station, sometimes as far away as Kermit, and then repeat the routine the next day. Different rig, different district, different crew, different expectations. You learn to pack light when you're in those working conditions. You learn not to get too invested because things change very quickly. In addition to filling vacancies like in those like ranks, those of us firefighters who were in the relief pool were often used to fill vacancies in ranks that we were not even qualified to be in, such as captains or engineers. We had firefighters acting up into those positions. Besides the obvious safety issue that this presents, a lack of promotional opportunities killed morale. Nevertheless, we voluntarily chose to act up in those positions to help the city reduce its overtime expenditures. By making these concessions, we saved the city $8.3 million in reduced overtime. This form of fiscal emergency response by your Fresno firefighters is just one of the ways our concessions saved the city over $13 million. Thank you.
Good afternoon, member of the council. My name is Carlton Jones. I'm a member of the Fresno Fire, Firefighters, Local 753. And I wanna go over just a couple of things. One for clarification, and the other one just to talk about promise-keeping as an elected official. Just to make it clear, the offer that you guys talked about was an offer from us. That wasn't, that was an offer from you guys, and it was agreed to be told to us. And if you heard that or got a letter first thing this morning, then you got that letter before most of us. The first time I heard about it as a member of these guys was when it was mentioned and read here at this council meeting. But if that is your offer to us, I think that changes what you can impose on us. That will become your last, best, and final. Now, as council, remember that. You're gonna be advised by your staff that that's not the case, but to make it clear and on record, that was not our offer, that was your offer, which changes your last, best, and final. I'm in a unique position because not only do I fight fire here in Fresno, but I'm also an elected official in my own city. So I understand the pressures that you have as a council member to balance budgets and provide services to people. The other thing that I understand is running for office, addressing many groups, telling people in your community the type of council member you'll be, and I urge you to keep your word. Just keep your word. If you made a promise to the people in your district, keep your word to that district. If you made a promise to these members in this body, keep your word to these members. And it can be tough sometimes, especially when we get staff reports and we expect our staff to be the professionals. But as council members, it's our job and our responsibility to our constituents to read and go over that information. We are one of the busiest fire departments there is. I've worked at a department before and we averaged 12 fires a year, and we thought we were busy. And I came to work here in Fresno in 2002, and we did that in a month. Now, we are on a record-breaking pace for fighting fire and putting ourselves in danger. And we are not trying to break the bank. Some of these guys say they don't know why they're firefighters. I can tell you from me, I knew I wanted to be a firefighter since I was five years old, and I'll risk my health, I'll kick open doors for you, I'll save lives, and we're not asking for anything that we feel is unfair. In fact, if, you know, I explained to these guys that impasse is part of the process, and if we have to go to impasse, then that next step should be fact-finding and you guys to get the information you need to show that maybe these guys aren't asking for too much. And as a council member, I thank you. As leaders of the city, it's been a pleasure working for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Carlton.
Hello. Lupi Fernandez, Fresno Fire Department, also a citizen. Last week, I had the opportunity to listen to you catch a radio show on KMJ. Got to hear a local council person talk about how Local 39's award that they just won in court would go a long way if they were to stand up and give some of that money back. You've had the opportunity to listen to our members talk about the concessions we've given for several years, over and over. Now, it's time to let you make good on that promise. Is it gonna go a long way or is it not? We talk about the numbers, you've heard a lot of the numbers here, but what you haven't heard are the intangibles. The intangibles are very, very difficult to quantify. And to me, I didn't understand it until very recently. Very recently, I answered a call, middle of the night, to be recalled back to work because there was a major emergency in our city. I'm at soccer practice with my son, and I tell him, "Son, I've gotta go. Gotta go back to work." My son, who's a very strong individual, breaks down and starts crying on the soccer field. Says, "Dad, I've done everything I can do. I've gone out, I've scored two goals today, I've worked as hard as I can work." The kid can barely walk. And if you know my son, he's willing to give you that every time. He grabbed my leg, didn't wanna let me go. He's like, "Dad, tell your boss no." We answer the call every time. We don't say no. I left that day, and it wasn't till that day that I understood the intangibles of what I've been giving up for nine years of my family's life. And I kept, we continue to do it over and over. We're asking to be treated fair, and that's all we want. Thank you.
My name is Brad Driscoll. I'm a fire captain, I'm a member of Local 753, and I'm also one of the negotiators for Local 753. About a year ago, we started the negotiation process with city administration. They came to us and said, "We have a problem. Our problem is we're gonna run out of cash. If we run out of cash, we're gonna go bankrupt." We said, "We wanna sit down with you and come up with innovative solutions to solve this problem." About halfway through negotiations, they said, "No." Not just city administration, the lawyer they brought in to negotiate against us said, "It is no longer a cash problem. We have structural problems with employee benefits." We said, "We understand. We wanna work with you. We wanna come up with innovative solutions. We'll sit and talk with you." There's been ups and downs, like any negotiation process. We go back to our members, they send us back, they have concerns, they have problems. We bring them back to you and city administration. We deal with the problems. We were still dealing with the problems when the city declared impasse on us at one of our meetings. We were working on innovative solutions, you stopped the process. I do not understand what this imaginary deadline is, that we have to get this done in the next week or two. The only thing I can imagine, it has something to do with the salary resolution that the council is asked to pass by city administration, or it has something to do with the fiscal numbers that are coming out in 2015. Since the city administration didn't tell us why we have this imaginary deadline, we can only guess. This leaves me confused, and it leaves me discouraged in the process. I do not understand the imaginary deadline. Thank you.
My name's Chad Brusdinian, part of Local 753. Couple of weeks ago, it was said that we were just being asked to contribute a little bit more to our future. We've already invested in our future, and our system, our future is secure. It's secure for two reasons. First of all, the Fresno Police and Fire Retirement System is one of the only retirement systems in the state that is overfunded, 100%, correct? It's been overfunded for about 19 years. Those last 17 years, it's been so overfunded that the city has not had to pay into that fund to the tune of $126 million. My future is fully funded and is fully funded at the current rate which we are paying. To ask us to pay more is not based on market or fund performance, but on politics. Pension systems have become playing some political platforms, and rather than facts, the public gets rhetoric. The second reason our retirement system is secure is because we tend to die young, and this is something I want you to really listen to. Most firefighters who spent their careers in Fresno don't outlast their investment. As a profession, firefighters are 102% more likely to get testicular cancer, 51% more likely to get non-Hodgkin lymphoma, 39% more likely to get skin cancer, 32% more likely to get brain cancer, 28% more likely to get prostate cancer, and as the list goes on. Once again, this was hammered home to us about a week ago when we buried a retired Fresno firefighter. After a 30-year career, Captain Gary Bolinger died of cancer just four years after retiring. Four years. After 30 years of beating his body for the city, Gary got to enjoy his investment for four years. We've been investing in our future with money from our paychecks by beating our bodies into the ground. It's time the city recognizes that investment. Thank you.
I'm a firefighter for Fresno City, Local 753. Firefighting is an inherently dangerous profession. Everyone knows this. What everyone doesn't know is that it's also a debilitating one. It's been documented that due to the nature of our profession, career, firefighters will lose about 10 years off of their life expectancy. I don't know a single firefighter that isn't walking around without some sort of back, neck, knee, or shoulder injury. The number one killer in our profession isn't getting burned in a fire, it's heart failure. Each year, nearly 100 firefighters die in the line of duty, about half of those are due to heart attack. And this number doesn't even reflect those that die soon after retirement. They never make the stat sheet. The bottom line is, this job beats us up, and sometimes lethally. In 2009, the city declared a fiscal emergency. We know quite a lot, quite a bit about emergencies. We respond to about 100 of them every day. And we are one of the very first employer groups to respond to this fiscal emergency. Beginning in 2009, your firefighters voluntarily gave up their annual physicals to save the city money, and we continue to do so to this day. Since 2009, we haven't had a checkup, a cancer screening, or an EKG, and we haven't gotten a single ounce of credit for that. And yet, this is literally our health and wellness that we've put on the line to keep the city out of bankruptcy. This generous response by your firefighter saves the city $200,000 each year for a total savings of $1 million since 2009. This form of emergency response by your Fresno firefighters was just one of the ways our concessions saved the city over $13 million.
My name is Nancy Garnier, and my husband is a captain for the city of Fresno. He's at work right now, so I'm here speaking on his behalf. He doesn't even know I'm going to be speaking, but I'm here because I don't understand why we are even needing to be here pleading for your support. These men and women risk their lives daily. They leave their families for days and weeks at a time. I don't know if you've ever stood in the midst of a structure fire where the flames were shooting 100 feet in the air, and if you've seen your husband go into that building and all these other men and women going into a building risking their lives, I'm here to tell you what it feels like to be the wife, okay? I don't understand why we're here pleading for your support, but I would like to urge you for your support. They deserve your support. They leave their families for holidays. When my husband started working here almost 20 years ago, I used to lay in bed in the morning waiting to hear the sound of the garage door opener, because that would tell me that he made it through the night. That would tell me that he was home for me and my children. Okay? It took me a few years to stop listening for the sound of the garage door opening in the morning to know that he was safe. Another thing that I would like to talk about is the nightmares that some of these people may be experiencing because of the severe trauma that they are witness to on a daily basis. They go on calls that are life- affecting. Some of these traumas will never, ever leave their mind. Silent nightmares that all these fine people probably won't talk about, but I'm here to tell you about these nightmares. We would like support because they deserve it. They're willingly doing this, they love their job, they're serving the community, they're here for you. Thank you for coming back. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. It seems like you're very, uh... It's, it's... Thank you. It seems like you're a little preoccupied over there, when we're sitting here pouring our hearts out to you. So, yeah, thanks for coming back. These people fight for you. I really just urge you to please fight for them and their families, because our children need it. Our wives and our husbands, they need it. Please consider this. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Excuse me, I look like a... I know I look like the guy that just spoke last. He's my twin brother. My name is Mark Garcia. I'm a Fresno firefighter. Been here ten years, member Local 753. I'm a Fresno firefighter, and I stand on the front lines with everyone else here every day. And it's the worst staff fire department in the nation, just about. If it's not the worst, I'd like to see who is, and I'd like to give him a pat on the back. That's not hyperbole. The facts are simple. Currently have seventy-one firefighters on duty each day in the city for over half a million people. We have as many firefighters on duty as we did in the 1960s. We weren't always the worst staff in the country. That began in 2009. When in response to the fiscal emergency that we've all been talking about, city leadership chose to close down six companies. And we did, and we lost twenty percent of our staffing daily. That's translated into more workload for us. And we've picked up the workload of six companies lost. Most of that, some of the biggest of that is our truck companies. We have engine guys, if you know the difference, doing truck company work. We now have truck equipment on our engines. If anyone has had any experience trying to do two jobs to the best of your ability, it's kinda hard. You're good at one to the best of your ability, and you're okay at another. It kinda works that way in life. Jack-of-all-trades is good at... They're okay at everything, good at nothing. Unfortunately, that's a bad way to do business for us, and that's what you've kind of done to us, essentially. Kinda going off track, I know. But we've picked up the workload of six engine and truck companies, all while being furloughed and taking pay cuts. Our commitment to working harder with less resources was one of the ways we responded to the city's emergency. This form of fiscal emergency response by our Fresno firefighters, by us, was just one of the ways that our concessions, and it's been thrown around that they're temporary... I haven't got my money back yet. I don't see where the temporary comes in. But that we have saved over thirteen million dollars. Thank you.
Hello, Counsel. John Creasy, firefighter, Local 753. Want to talk to you real quick about a proposal for a reduction in healthcare benefits with this proposed contract. As firefighters, we constantly place ourselves in harm's way to protect the most valuable and sacred thing to this community: their safety. As an employee group, we have arguably the largest risk profile of any employee group in the city. I think that wouldn't be argued here today, would it? A third of our lives is spent going into the most un-hospitable environments, whether it be to put out a fire, to rescue an occupant, whether it be to give CPR, to whoever it be in the city, or to even catch an arsonist. It is a dangerous profession. We are exposed to all matters of germs, pathogens, toxins, and carcinogens during the course of our duties. And some of none, if not all, these are exposures we can bring home to our families. The city is trying to limit their liability by increasing ours. The contract that is being offered to us includes a reduction in our compensation by increasing our healthcare costs. This increase in healthcare puts our family at greater risks. The last thought you want a firefighter having is going to a medical aid and worrying about if they can pay the doctor's visits for if their child comes down or contracts a disease that this individual might have. About a month ago, one of our own firefighters, works in this district, responds to this building, came down with a strange virus that attacked his heart, mimicked a heart attack. Doctors couldn't diagnose it. We don't know where he got this. The doctors have not been able to diagnose it, but it possibly could have been from the eleven hundred calls this individual runs a year. This one-size-fits-all approach the city wants to take with its employees in regard to healthcare is unreasonable. It is unreasonable because we are not all exposed to the same risk levels. People often ask me, "How do I do what I do? How do I go on seeing the things that I see and function normally?" Well, let me tell you. At the end of a long shift, I go home, much like you go home at the end of your day. Open the door, there's my family. Two-year-old Charlotte comes running up, runs her, places her arms around my neck and says, "Daddy." That melts all that trauma, death, and hazards that I see. In that regard, our families are the ones that protect us. And I'm asking you that we start protecting the people that protect us. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Chantia McIntyre. I live on 6752 North Raphael. I'll be short, because my kids are tired, as I'm sure everybody else is. I just come to you from the perspective that these guys love this city, and they love their jobs. And they voted for you all. I mean, Mr. President, you came to our porch, and you talked to us, person to person, and you said, "I support firefighters." And so I ask you, what does that mean if you support firefighters? All we're asking is that you leave us alone. We gave enough. So leave us alone. That's all we're asking. And so the level of support that we're looking for is that just honor your word. Honor your word. And let enough be enough. And there's a real lack of trust here. I want you to understand that, too. Because we're feeling like the more we give, the more you're gonna take. I mean, I know that before you were a politician, you were a regular person, and you felt that same way, but I just want you to understand that there's a real lack of trust here. And at some point, we feel like we're gonna stop negotiating, just like you guys feel like you want to stop negotiating. So just remember that we're constituents, we're real people, and that enough is enough. Oh, one more thing. You did say that was real noble, that you guys were working on your lunch break, which I get. I'm a teacher, I work on my lunch break, too. These guys work every day on their lunch break. And Christmas Day. And so I just really want to encourage you. I'm not asking... This is not about a pity party. This is about... This is what we signed up for. And this is what you guys signed up for. So make the tough choice, and stand up, and really support your firefighters. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Counsel. My name is Christian Palmer. I'm a captain in the Fresno City Fire Department and a member of Local 753. Seventeen years ago, I sat in these front chairs right here, and I listened to a speech by Mayor Jim Patterson. He talked about the deplorable condition of the fire department, the understaffing, the antiquated equipment, and he made a commitment to rebuild that fire department. And then walked up to where you all are sitting. I raised my right hand, and I made a... I swore an oath to protect the citizens of Fresno. I realized that that oath might mean that I'm putting myself in jeopardy, that I might be risking my life to help somebody that I don't even know, somebody I'll never see again. But I made that oath, knowing that this was the job I signed up for, it's what I wanted to do. I then walked down those stairs, I came over here, and I cemented the deal by shaking Mr. Patterson's hand. I went to work that first shift with a big old smile on my face. Over the next seventeen years, I watched as my newly adopted city of Fresno, not being originally from Fresno, I watched as my new city started showing up on these national polls at the bottom ranking. Education, crime, arson, poverty. I realized that all of those, every single one of those, affect my job as a firefighter. I worked downtown at Station 3, and I've worked down here for a lot of years. I see that every single day, and I know that those things that make Fresno a bad place to live make my job more difficult. You know what? I was still able to go to work with a smile on my face. Then I started watching the city of Fresno spend money almost without, seemingly without oversight, parking garages, stadiums, museums. I was sent to the multimillion-dollar boondoggle known as Imagine 21. That's a whole different steal. I came back to work, shaking my head, but I could still smile. You know what? If you guys impose these unfair and unethical contract negotiations, uh, contract issues on us, you know what? I work next Sunday and Monday. I know it's scheduled to be 108 degrees on Monday. Guess what? I'm gonna go to work, I'm gonna put fifty pounds of gear on, and I guarantee you, I'm gonna go on multiple fire calls, multiple fire calls where I have to put that and know again that I may be risking my life, trading my life for your life. I know that. But guess what? I sure as hell aren't gonna have a smile on my face.
If there's anybody else that wants to come up and make a statement, now's your Anybody? I want everybody to have a chance. Come on up. Yeah, we're not... We don't do that. Yeah, sorry, Carlton. Sorry. No. We don't... We can have... You know what, Carlton? What we can do... Well, no. Officially, you can't go now, but here's what's gonna happen, I can tell. When Counsel talks, Councilman Quintero's gonna call you back up. You got it.
Marina Magdaleno, 4644 West Jaclyn, 93722. My... This isn't my fight, and I don't normally speak on behalf of anybody, but my issue is with the process. And I'll speak to the process because of how this whole imposition went down, and the fact that FIRE continued to negotiate in good faith with the city of Fresno. And that's where my issue is, is that I believe that somewhere along the line, the process is skewed. Normally, what happens is that you go to impasse, and you don't continue to meet, because the union then immediately will file for mediation and fact-finding. And that didn't happen in this process, and I think that both sides did work very hard at coming to a resolution, but I think that FIRE, in some way, they're getting the short end of the deal, because they're not going through the entire process. The other part that I... And I've listened to everybody speak, and you know, I've sat through many of these with my members, you know, long lines of people talking. And I heard a lot of things, a lot of things that I have continuously brought to you, and that is that, how can you hear the leaders of our city, expect people to continue to give, and give, and give, when our city leadership continues to spend? One of the things that one of the firemen brought up was the high-powered attorney that you hired and have paid well over a million dollars to. Can you imagine what that million dollars would have done? How many... How much more money you could have bought three new engines, maybe? Two new engines. Okay? The fact that, when I went to fact-finding, when we went to our hearing, the city had three lawyers there. And I estimated that that was, you know, $2,500 an hour, easy. And so I look at the spending habits, and that's why it's so... I am so passionate at times about fighting, that when you talk about money, some of you are staunch persons that don't believe in spending, spending, spending. But you don't support that. Because if you... I believe, if I was in your shoes, I'd have put a stop to that a long time ago. I would have stuck to my guns, and I would have held the administration liable for some of those things. But it continues. And until that stops, you're gonna have a lot of pushback from the unions, and the people, and everyone else. And, you know, I have really been moderating the, you know, really looking at how many fires we're having right now. And I've never seen this many fires in our city. You know, I think it's at an all-time high. And so I think that you really need to think this through, because I think that the process is kinda skewed here. Thank you very much.
Counsel members, my name is Amy Dragoo. I am the wife of a firefighter with Fresno City Fire. I am also a registered nurse in the city. I know what it's like to put my hands on somebody's chest and pump them back to life. I know what it's like to put my breath on them and help them breathe life back into their bodies, just like all of these gentlemen and sisters out here. This is a family. This is a family. My husband and I had a family. Those are our two small children. I know one thing, in our household, if things start to get tight, we look at the kids and we like, we say, "You know what? We need to cut down on spending. We need to cut down on spending. Things need to tighten up a little bit. There's no extras right now." I know that in my household, as I protect my household, if it were to catch on fire, just like your city is burning, I don't run away. I don't go run to the other side of town. Downtown is burning, your city is burning. You have adopted, being the city managers of this family, of this Fresno family. You are in charge, just like I am in charge of my family. It is not for you to walk away and take the protection away from your city. You are supposed to protect your city. That means keeping law enforcement in place. That means keeping the firefighters in place and intact, and their families solid, so that they can assist in protecting your family. If the fires were burning up at the north side of town, I'm pretty sure every single one of you would be running to these gentlemen first. You would be dialing 911, and what are you gonna do when they cannot respond? Thank you.
Dee Barnes, 3730 Kenmore Drive North. I would just like to say, we all know that the city's been going through tough times. Started in 2008, and it's been tough. But I remember in the beginning of August 2011, Mayor Swearingen stood over in the press room over here with myself and with previous President Kirk Wanless, and praised our associations, told the citizens how much we were giving back, trying to help the city get through this. And since that time, it just seems things have continued to... They've become adversarial. There's no longer trust between most of the employees. I spoke this morning over the issue of the salary resolution, and it's just so many of the employees are feeling that they're not being listened to. They don't have... There's no partnership. A lot of us have tried to work with the city to come up with some creative ways to save the city money and help us get through the continued tough times, and we don't feel that there is a partnership here. When the city spends a million dollars on a high-priced law firm out of San Francisco designed to come after the employees, it makes it very tough for the employees to continue to give, and give, and give. And I would just encourage all of you to really look at the entire picture. And I will say this, I was a little disappointed when I saw the memo that Personnel Director Jeff Cardell posted to this Clerk's Page late yesterday afternoon, because I do know there were seven pages of the 2013 W-2 information. And I think that if you're gonna look at that, you need to get the salary resolution out and look at what the true base salary is on that. I've worked in payroll. I know a lot of those figures are very, very skewed, because they're including all kinds of extra pay. And I know a lot of our firefighters are not... You've heard from a lot of them. They're not working overtime by choice. And Councilmember Baines worked at the police department. You know, a lot of the officers do want to work the overtime, but a lot, it's not out of choice. It's because they're needed. And part of that overtime, too, is if it's out of this area, it's also being reimbursed to the city. And I don't believe Mr. Cardell included that information in that package you guys got. So just really think about that, because the firefighters have been a true partner during the tough times. So, thank you.
Councilmember Quintero, and, and the other council members. I, I just wanted to, to let you know that one thing, no matter what you've heard, you know, this is, being a firefighter is an awesome career, and it's one of those dream come true careers, but I'll promise you that none of us becomes a firefighter because we wanna get rich. There's not one firefighter that becomes a firefighter for a financial gain. We all do it because we're help junkies. And, uh, you know, in 2008, 2009, you know, I'm, I'm not ashamed to say it, that I wasn't living outside of my means, but working for the city of Fresno, uh, my means were greatly reduced. And because of that, I'm one of the many firefighters that lost their home to foreclosure. And, um, it's tough, you know, it's tough to, to, I, I got eight kids, and when I'm telling them all that it's time to pack up and move, that's pretty tough, and we've done that. Maybe there are some people that, that don't work the overtime because they have to. I promise you, and I'm speaking for myself, I work on average about 500 hours a year in overtime because I have to. I have three kids at Fresno State, and when my means are cut, there's no other way to make sure that my kids are comfortable. Um, uh, you know, when I, when I, I understand the position you're in, I really do, guys, and I understand the position these guys are in because I'm in it with them. And this isn't a recommendation coming from the body, but when I think as a council member and as a firefighter, uh, if you guys are truly in a situation where you're hurting, um, let me ask you this first of all, whose district is in, is Station 17 and 18 is? Not sure, uh, but let, let me tell you what happens when we're depleted because there's multiple fires in Fresno. Your district is left uncovered. Those stations have to come to the core of the city to protect what's, what's in the city, where the fires are. And that's just not a way to safely do business. We, we really need to stop that. You wanna offer, and you guys, I'm gonna throw out a good idea, you can take credit for it, go back in the closed session and present it, you wanna offer that you can get voted on probably 100%, keep these guys status quo. Keep us status quo. Give us a year, 0%, um, and we'll see you back at the table after a year. I'm pretty sure that that's an offer that both, that both can agree on. We're not asking for much of anything, matter of fact, we're not asking for nothing. Make an offer, encourage your negotiating team to give them a 0% contract for a year, and I promise you, well, I can't really promise you, but I'm pretty sure that that'd go over pretty good. Thank you. Thanks again for your time.
Yeah, now it's, uh, up to council comments, and, um, City Manager Rudd, you had punched in.
Thank you. I, I just felt it was important, given that I've heard it at least two or three times, and I've heard a lot about trust, and I've heard a lot about partnership, and I, I wanna thank Pete and James and, and Dean, you, you guys are in a tough spot, and, and, but I wanna make clear that, as, as Pete, as you said, you reached out and said, "We'd like to get a deal. Would you consider the following?" And I told you I'd take it back, and what you're seeing today is a willingness amongst this council, this council, to basically take you and take the deal and accept this deal. All we're asking now is that you take it back to your membership. I know this is a tough place for you to put, and I, and I appreciate all the hard work we have all put into this. The council is demonstrating their willingness to, to accept your offer. We appreciate the work that you've done, but I need to make it clear that this is your offer to us, and the council, by the motion that's on the floor, is willing to accept that offer. So, thank you.
Yeah, Pete, come on up.
Bruce, that was, uh, the letter that I sent today was just a discussion that we had yesterday and this morning. I put it in document form to have it document that it was stuff that we discussed to bring forward to, um, see if it would be acceptable, but that was dialogue that me and you had. Okay.
All right, we have a clear screen. We have a motion and a second, and let's vote electronically. This vote is to, uh, City Attorney, it's, it's been a couple hours since we made that motion, let's clarify that. What is the yes vote here for and the no vote?
Uh, Councilmember Baines has the motion written out. It's essentially to accept the terms by resolution that was offered up by the association today, and then if it is not ratified by the association by, uh, July 9th, then on July 10th, the council will reconvene to consider whether to implement.
So, yes vote is to go with that motion to accept that, um, document? Oh, did you wanna? Okay. All right, let's vote. All right, that motion passes unanimously, seven to zero, and that is the last thing on our agenda today, I believe.
Do we have unscheduled?
Okay. All right, we have unscheduled communication left, which means somebody can come forward and talk about any item on today's agenda.
I'm gonna say, um, I want your attention, Mr. President. I wanna say thank you for allowing these people to have their chance to bring forth a good democracy for their family like you all have. I gave, uh, the Chief of, uh, Fire Department all the paperwork that I was talking about, all my tax papers with the, uh, Fire Department, all of your papers here, which you guys took out the taxes and stuff, um, from the voters. I gave her a whole stack of papers, so I want her to review everything that you guys been doing up here, and you knows about this here, tax money for the Police Department, for the unions, and for the Fire Department, and I want her to keep those papers and give Chief Dyer and Ke, and Zacky a copy of it, so they'll know what's going on with that part of the money, that don't include the money that they've been paying out of the taxes that, uh, you guys been, uh, taken out of their money. If we're gonna be right, we're gonna do right for the city of Fresno, let's be right for everyone that's involved. And when you tell me to talk to you, to look at you, I be doing that, but when you look away, I see self, of paying attention, that makes me kinda worry, and that's why I go to the people and talk to those people too, because I'm still part of this body right here myself. I want, I come here so I can make a sound decision, give you all the options that need to be taken, and, and you go back and you talk, and then you come out with a sound decision, something that is right for everybody. And this is what you've guys done here today, and I wanna thank you for it, so keep up the good work, and you made everybody happy, kids is happy, families happy, citizens happy, everybody's happy. I'm happy too, I'm going home, I'm hungry as shit. Y'all ate up all the food back there, and here I am starving. But what I wanna say, thank you, Mr. President, and tell the, um, Tea Party that you're a nice person, you get down to the facts, and you make sure that everybody has a chance for equal opportunity here in America. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara.
You're welcome. You too, Rudd. You brought, you put your hat down, but next time you can do a little better. After that president, that Chief, uh, Fire Department, see those papers that she got from all that property taxes, and you guys taking property taxes out too for the Police and Fire Department, she might come back and want more money as soon as hell out of y'all. I be glad.
All right, is there anybody else?